Scott County Board of Adjustment, Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty, six thirty P.M. First item on the agenda is roll call and introductions. And roll call, I'll handle it from here. Planning Advisory Commissioner Donna Hentges.
Here.
Gary Hartman, here. Ray Huber.
Here.
Here. Ed Robby.
Here.
Barb Johnson.
Here.
Tom Vonhoff.
Here.
And Lee Watson. Commissioners Ed Robby and Lee Watson are downstairs in a conference room, attending the meeting via Skype, due to the cold restrictions here. Also in attendance are county staff, Brad Davis, our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, senior planner, Nathan Hall, associate planner. Let's see here. Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board, and I'm not sure if Tom Wolfe, county commissioner, is here or if he's...
He's here.
Well, county commissioner Tom Wolfe. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the August tenth, two thousand twenty Board of Adjustment minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner who?
Me.
Vonhoff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Ms. Vaughn, Ed Robby and...Ed Robby?
Aye.
And Lee Watson?
Aye.
And the other five board members also aye, so unanimous seven-zero. Next item on the agenda is a...was a public hearing for Mezzanbrink Variance, PL number twenty twenty dash zero four six, request for a variance to reduce the required lot width from a hundred feet to sixty-six feet, located Section ten, Credit River Township. The current zoning is UER, and Greg Wagner will present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. On the screen is the site location map of the Mezzanbrink property, Section ten, Credit River Township. We...staff is recommending at this point to table this item until the October meeting, and I just want to give a brief explanation of what we're...the reason for that. Mr. Mezzanbrink owns a ninety-five acre parcel in Section ten of Credit River Township, so this is north of County Road twenty-one and off of Notches Avenue. Murphy-Hannerham Park is just to the northeast. This is an aerial photo of the property. Mr. Mezzanbrink, his home site is here. He has a couple accessory buildings throughout the property. Last year, he built a home in this location, right here, for a family member. It's the only home on the property. The request that was published for the public hearing notice was to...was a variance from the lot width. Scott County ordinance requires a one-hundred-foot lot width extending from the public street going back to the building location. The variance was due to these two accessory buildings here. We couldn't meet the one-hundred-foot lot width because it would put a property line through those buildings. The applicant...if I go to the survey. So the home is back here, the accessory buildings are here, the one-hundred-foot lot line width would go right here. There's a shared driveway that goes back to this home, also the home to the north, and then to these sheds to the back. The applicant was proposing to go one-hundred feet to this point here, then jog around the shed, and then go sixty-six feet back, which was the variance request. After meeting with the township last Wednesday night, this memo from the township's consultant planner was forwarded to the commission after it was received this morning, and what the township is requesting, because they're...as of Wednesday night, they approved their comprehensive plan, so as you know, Credit River will be taking land authority back from Scott County. They have now adopted their comprehensive plan, and their main concern was a deeded access strip, which is this one-hundred feet. So the township does not want this one-hundred-foot strip going out to the road. This is a future urban area, and they see those strips as a barrier to extension of utilities along the public street. So what the township is recommending, county staff is supporting, and the applicant has agreed to, is we will just be creating a parcel outlining green with easements over the orange driveway area, going back to that home and to this home here. We have to modify the request that was published because we did it for a public hearing, so we're recommending tabling this item. All parties are in agreement on what we would do here. The applicant will be requesting a variance from the lot frontage requirement, and that will be at the October twelfth meeting. So we will republish that request, bring this back to you in a different form at that meeting. So again, recommending tabling the item till that time.
Okay, thank you, Greg. So no further action is needed by our board, we'll just...
Correct.
Table it. Thank you, Greg. Next item on the agenda then would be a public hearing for hall variance.
Mr. Chairman, we do have to act on the tabling, though?
I was told we don't have to.
Oh, okay. We don't have to act on tabling it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, no, because staff and the township are requesting this to be pulled. We can just proceed with tabling the item till next month.
Okay.
And republish, so...
All right, thank you, Burke. Public hearing for hall variance, PL number twenty twenty dash zero five six. It's a request for a variance from the required minimum lot size of forty acres in the urban transition reserve district to a one-point-nine-five acre parcel located Section thirteen, Helena Township. The current zoning is UTR, and Nathan Hall will present.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Evening Commissioners. The subject property is located in Section thirteen of Helena Township, about a quarter mile away from Cedar Lake. It is located on a county roadway, and the subject property is one-point-nine-five acres. The minimum lot size in the UTR district is forty acres. To determine if the property is illegal, nonconforming, or grandfathered property, what we would do is we would determine when the lot was created, and if the parcel was created before the first subdivision ordinance was adopted, the property would be considered buildable. This property, however, though, was created in the mid nineteen seventies, and therefore is not buildable. In nineteen seventy-six, Gilbert Born, a previous owner, applied for a permit to construct a garage on the vacant parcel, which was legal to do at that time. Shortly after the garage was constructed, it was observed by the planning director that a portion of the garage had been converted into a living area. And so the planning director advised the owner to seek a variance from the required forty acres to a one-point-nine-five acre parcel. The owner applied for the variance, but the variance was denied. The owner continued to reside in the garage after the variance denial. So in nineteen seventy-nine, Gilbert Born was charged and convicted with violating three zoning regulations: living in a garage in violation of the ordinance, installing a sewer without a permit, and installing a well without a permit. However, it appears that he was not required to remove the living quarters, and at some point he began living in the garage again. Mr. Born passed away in the early two thousands, and Mr. Rodney Doos purchased the property in two thousand twelve. He applied for a building permit to move in a modular home, and the planner, who was reviewing the permit, conducted some research and discovered this history of the property. In two thousand thirteen, Mr. Doos applied for and was granted a variance from the required forty-acre lot size to one-point-nine-five acres to move in a modular home. A variance was acted...must be acted upon within one year of the date of issuance, or else the variance will expire, and Mr. Doos did not place a home within that one year, and so therefore it did expire. And the property has now been sold. The applicant, Mr. Brandon Hall, intends to purchase the subject parcel from the existing owner and construct a new home on the property, and so any new home on the property is going to be required to meet all the requirements of the ordinance for setbacks, building requirements, septic, and all of the requirements. Helena Township has recommended approval of the request at their September board meeting. They have four conditions. Those conditions have been addressed. The project will be required to meet setbacks, taxes, will be current at the transaction of the property, the landowner is aware of the right-to-farm ordinance, and the driveway...we cleared this up with the township, it is actually a county roadway, and so the applicant will need to contact the county highway department regarding any access permits. So in summary, this part of the county has experienced many changes in the zoning designation, minimum lot size over the years. Because these changes, most of the properties around the...around the subject property do not meet the forty-acre minimum, many do not meet the ten-acre minimum either. It's not far from Cedar Lake where there are much smaller lots than this. Staff could make an argument for approval or denial of this ordinance, of this variance, but we are recommending approval based on a unique history of the lot, also the fact that the variance was approved back in two thousand thirteen, and also the residential use of this parcel is in keeping with all the other parcels in the area. And so staff is recommending approval of the requested variance based on the criteria listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Nathan. Is there any questions by the board?
Nathan, Mr. Chair, Nathan, as far as the garage, existing garage, is he gonna abandon that, is he gonna clean it out, make it like in the storage area, and take out the housing part of it? What's his plans for the garage?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, the applicant has stated they will be abandoning the septic system and removing the living quarters from the garage.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I drove out there Saturday, spent some time with the applicants. They have their area plotted out where their new home is going to be built, and also the septic system and triple tank, enough for five bedrooms, I guess, if they ever add on someday. You have any more questions by the board? I have a question. Nate, then, what does it mean, landowners aware of crops of right-to-farm orchard, does it say?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. The township is stating that they have a right-to-farm ordinance, that they want to make sure that the landowner is aware of.
That who has the right to farm?
My understanding, Mr. Chair, is that some...I have not seen the township's right-to-farm ordinance, I should clarify that, but oftentimes there are right-to-farm ordinances, that what they do is they clarify to any kind of new homeowners that are moving in, particularly on smaller lots, that there will be different sorts of agricultural activities, manure, different things going on, and any landowner should be aware of that.
Okay, that makes sense. And then the fourth item, driveway to be inspected by the township board, if noncompliant to driveway permit will be required. I mean, that driveway's been in there since the mid-seventies and was driven on by a dump truck, gravel truck. Beautiful driveway, but what...do they inspect everybody's driveways, or...
Mr. Chair, in this instance, we did talk with the township clerk about this, and that was not what they intended to have. So this is a county roadway, and so rather than working with the township, they will be working with the county highway department and talking with the staff out there as to whether or not this driveway is in acceptable position or not. It will be up to them to decide whether there are any improvements that are needed, or whether it is fine as is.
Any other questions by the board? If not, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the audience wishes to address this issue, please step up to the podium, sign in your name and address, and state your case. Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Vonhoff, second by Commissioner Huber. All those in favor, the five board members here, say aye.
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 And then Commissioner Robby?
Aye.
Commissioner...
Watson.
Watson?
Watson.
Watson?
Easy for good. Yay!
All right. Motion carries seven-zero. Public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, based on the variance, practical difficulties criteria stated in the Stafford part, I recommend approval of the requested lot size variance, and knowing the town board has recommended approval with conditions.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Huber, second by Commissioner Hentges. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor in the room here, the five commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
And Commissioner Robby?
Aye.
And Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. And that is it for the Scott County Board of Adjustment. I'll accept a motion to close the Board of Adjustment. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Huber, second by Commissioner Johnson. All those, the five board members in here, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Robby?
Aye.
Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Okay. Seven-zero, the meeting of Scott County Board of Adjustment is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty. I'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with our roll call and introductions. I will call the roll. Donna Hentges?
Here.
Gary Hartman?
Here.
Ray Huber?
Here.
Ed Robby?
Here.
Barbara Johnson?
Here.
Thomas Vonhoff, here. Lee Watson?
Here.
Also in attendance this evening, we have Brad Davis, who is our planning manager, Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, Greg Wagner, our senior planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, Deb Brazil is for administration, running the video, and Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board. In addition, Tom Wolfe, our county commissioner, is present this evening. Our next item of business is the approval of the August tenth, two thousand twenty Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. All the commissioners have been sent a copy of the minutes, and had an opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections, deletions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve the August tenth, two thousand twenty meeting minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hentges. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Huber. I will call a roll call vote for all the votes this evening. All in favor, this is to be in favor of approving the minutes. Commissioner Hentges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartman?
Aye.
Commissioner Huber?
Aye.
Commissioner Robby?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vonhoff, aye. Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
The August tenth meeting minutes are approved. Our next item is our consent agenda, and we have only one item on the consent agenda this evening, and that is the Mezzanbrink rezoning, which has been moved to the October twelfth meeting, I believe, and it's been tabled for that meeting. So if you're here for that item, that item will not be considered until the October twelfth meeting. That's Mezzanbrink rezoning. That's number twenty twenty dash zero four seven. So we will move on. We have a public hearing this evening. It's a Schiffer heliport application. The number is twenty twenty dash zero four eight. It's a request for conditional use to construct and operate a private heliport in the RR one district, Rural Residential One district. Location is Section twenty-six, Cedar Lake Township. The current zoning is Rural Residential One. And Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator, will be making the staff report for us this evening. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on the screen is the site location map. The applicant's property is outlined in red and blue on this map. It is in Section twenty-six of Cedar Lake Township. About a quarter mile to the north is two-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, our County Road two. About a quarter mile to the west of the applicant's property is Panama Avenue, our County Road twenty-three. The applicant's property consists of forty acres. The portion of the property that's outlined in red on this map consists of twenty-six acres, so twenty-six of the forty is outlined in red. We have it outlined in red because it's part of the Wildwood Pond Residential Cluster subdivision. The Wildwood Pond Residential Cluster subdivision includes the lots predominantly to the east of the applicant, and then also wrapping around to the north here. Within the residential cluster zoning district that this portion of this property is, heliports are not in allowed use, so you could not apply for a heliport on this property. The portion of the property that's outlined in blue to the south consists of about fourteen acres. This fourteen acres, he has under contract with the landowner, the Lovelace family, that owns this parcel here. There's a leg that extends back from Panama Avenue to the bulk of the property. Property is about twenty-six acres in size to start with, so when they sell the fourteen acres, they will still have twelve acres, which is larger than the ten-acre lot size that's allowed in that district. This property is owned RR one, which is Rural Residential. In the RR one district, helipads and airports aren't allowed conditional use permit. A conditional use is a use that is allowed within a district, but conditions can be placed on that permit to mitigate issues related to health, safety, general welfare of the residents in the area. If there are issues that can't be mitigated through conditions, this permit could be Conditional use permits do run with the land, so this permit would run with the land, so if the property was sold and a new owner came in here and they were going to operate, say this permit is approved in compliance with the conditions of that permit, they could go ahead and do so. I'm going to jump to an aerial photo now. Aerial photo of the applicant's property, again, the portion in red is the portion that's in the Wildwood Pond subdivision. You can see those residential lots here to the east of his property, wrapping around to the north. There are five vacant lots within Wildwood Pond here to the north of the applicant. He actually recently purchased those parcels, so the applicant does own these properties to the north. However, they are not tied to the property that he's looking to get the conditional use permit on. Also in this general vicinity is the Hunter's Crest Residential Cluster subdivision that's located in the southeast corner of Panama and County Road two here. The remainder of the property around here is predominantly large lot, rural residential and agricultural uses. These properties are zoned RR one, which is our Rural Residential District. I know there's been a number of comments received on this request. Some of those relate to the split zoning of this property, where you have a parcel that actually has two zoning districts within it. This is a map that shows the parcels in the county that have split zoning within them. There are approximately a hundred properties that have multiple zoning within them, and while generally you do want property boundaries to follow zoning district boundaries, we obviously have a number of them that do not do that. In the cases where this occurs, most frequently it's because you have a cluster district and a noncluster district of the same category. And what I mean by that is we have a number of them out here in the western part of the county, where we have an A-one district and an A-three district on the same property. The A-one district is our agricultural preservation district, and then our A-three is our cluster district, where somebody may pull the density off of that property. It's still zoned agricultural, but they pulled the density, and that's our mechanism for tracking that. You also have that sometimes in urban expansion areas, where you'll have an urban expansion reserve area, and then you also have a portion of the property that's owned urban expansion reserve cluster, where somebody's pulled that density from it. So this, while it might be a little bit unusual, it has occurred in the county. What I'd like to do with the presentation now is turn it over to Doug Schiefer, the applicant. Let him explain or introduce his team, go through their request. Once they are done, I would like to wrap up with a few comments before we open it up, open up the public hearing, if that's okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schreit.
When you come up to the podium, there's a sign-up sheet at the podium there. Before you start your comments, please just sign in there, and then, for the record,
Good evening, Chair and Commission. My name is Doug Schiefer. I want to thank all of you tonight, and the planning and zoning, there's been a lot of time and thought put into this conditional use permit. So for me, we all have passions in our lives, and for some that may be snowmobiles, muscle cars, motorcycles. For me, it's family, business, flying a helicopter, and honestly, anything outdoors. While most passions are allowed uses, my passion of flying a helicopter requires a conditional use permit. Flying is way more of a passion to me, though. Of course, it is exciting and enjoyable. It is also a way for me to travel for business, and by being a time saver, a way for me to spend more time with my family. Plus, my kids love flying with me. So some may question, why can't I just utilize an airport? Well, the short answer to that is if I wanted to go to an airport, I would have chosen an airplane as a method of travel. Helicopters were designed to land almost anywhere. There are many times where I need to do maintenance, or study avionics, or do pre-flight inspections. A pre-flight inspection can take upwards of forty-five minutes. Well, if I have to drive thirty minutes one way, which right now the helicopter is in Faribault, Minnesota, it's a thirty-minute drive from my house, and do a pre-flight...sorry. Do a forty-five-minute pre-flight, and then spend thirty minutes driving home, then it is not conducive to me to flying a helicopter. The ability for me to put the kids to bed and go spend an hour to pre-flight or do maintenance, and lock up the aircraft and secure it indoors with an alarm system, then that saves me the extra time when I do need to travel. And to spend an extra hour traveling to do these tasks simply will not happen. If I fly fifty times a year, this is an extra hundred hours of driving. Plus, the times traveling for maintenance or avionic updates, then the extra hours really start to add up, and not only is it unnecessary, but it honestly doesn't work in my life. At my business, at any given time, we are typically working in three to four different states. Plus, I tend to a small cattle ranch in Nebraska. A helicopter is by far the superior method of travel for me to be productive. So first, I started flying two and a half years ago out of Flying Cloud Airport. I trained with two pilots at Hummingbird Aviation. Both pilots told me I can land anywhere in Minnesota as long as I have homeowner approval, except Bloomington. I took that as good as gold. So almost exactly one year ago, Dominic Manier Asibo and myself flew the helicopter home from Canada to start training. Insurance company made me start over with my training, so I started two and a half years ago, and then once I purchased this aircraft, they... And then, once I purchased this aircraft, they made me completely start over in my own aircraft. And the reason this was, I was training in a piston engine helicopter, and the one I had purchased is a turbine engine helicopter. So, Dominic, he's a medevac pilot out of St. Louis. He was approved by the insurance company to train me. So, I had a helipad and a hangar, and finally, a helicopter. I was ready to go. Dominic would work seven days on and seven days off. So, during his time off, we trained together. We flew out of my current residence multiple times, from all different angles, directions, et cetera, as we were training. The reason I bring this up is for two reasons. One is the way we were flying is not indicative of the future. We were flying a lot and coming in from all different locations, and now that I have my license, I'm a member of Fly Neighborly, and I intend to do just that. Furthermore, Rex Alexander, which I'll introduce him here in a bit, he's a heliport expert. So, Rex will be giving a presentation shortly as well, specifically to heliports. But, so Rex will point out that we are creating approach and departure paths favorable to all neighbors for noise and safety. And the second reason I bring this up is because Lauren accuses me of lying about this situation. Lauren claims that I knew the zoning ordinances, and he told my neighbors I pull permits all the time because I'm in construction. Well, the truth is, I don't pull permits. General contractors and owners pull permits. I am a subcontractor. And furthermore, I'm not sure what pulling permits has to do with zoning ordinances. But, I never thought in a million years, honestly, that with the acres that I had, that I would have any problem whatsoever. I had heard rumor on the street at that time that Lauren Balls was calling the county and that the county was coming after me. I then called the county myself, I set up a meeting, and we met. At the meeting, I was told the county sent me a letter in the mail, which I had not received. Lauren also accuses me of lying about this. I received the letter for the very first time during the meeting with Scott County. I moved the helicopter the very next day to Faribault. And as luck would have it, the day after that, the letter did actually show up in the mail. But, myself not checking into county rules is completely my fault, no doubt about that. I took the pilot's word that I was flying with two different pilots at the time at Hummingbird, and I screwed up. I should have looked into it. But, Lauren calling me a liar over this is simply not true. And please note, future flying would be minimal, as noted in the conditions. I would not train out of my heliport if I planned to go do any training maneuvers whatsoever. I would go to an airport, and I will be following, flying neighborly, following FAA guidelines. This process has been extremely trying for me. My two neighbors, Lauren and Jim, have caused an incredible amount of unnecessary frustration. Their entire petition campaign is bogus because it's completely based off lies and deceit, which Rex will point out. But, here's a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Nikolay Popov. They're neighbors just to the east of our neighborhood on Wilderness Circle, and I quote, "To whom it may concern, I signed a petition to deny the request for a conditional use permit. I feel as though the person who stopped by and told me about the petition was untruthful, even deceitful, in their presentation of what the petition entailed. I am writing this quick note to let you know that I retract my signature on the petition to deny the conditional use permit. Some of the things that were said to me that were deceitful was they made it sound like it would be flying in and out multiple times a day, overstated danger to homes in the area, left out information about the number of times and flights and volumes of flights, stated helicopter owner had ten acres, since learned they have way more, stated it would drop property's values based on no evidence. I support whoever is applying for this conditional use permit to install a helipad." End quote. These guys have defamed me, told many lies about me, and sold neighbors on non-factual information about helicopters. And I recently found out they are telling people to treat me mean and vicious. The Lovelace have been intimidated too, which is totally uncalled for. And Lauren commented last November that he tracks my aircraft whenever I fly on a flight tracking software, which, to me, honestly, is downright creepy. I also believe you can look at your records to find out Lauren's a habitual complainer about everything from mud in the road to a neighbor with an aerator. From July fourteenth to July thirtieth, Lauren sent in over eleven complaints to the president of our association. However, he never once mentioned people that were in violation if they were people that were opposed to the helipad, nor did he include himself as a violator, which he is. After what I have heard they are saying to people in the area, I am honestly concerned for my kids, and have told them to stay clear of Lauren and Jim. There are several other reasons for this too, which I do not need to elaborate on tonight. I also want to address Gold Lake very briefly, as I believe the opposition will bring this up, trying to use it to their advantage. It's a completely different situation. Gold Lake did not have an ordinance to deal with heliports like Scott County does. Gold Lake was trying to create an ordinance. I was told verbally by the mayor and the city administrator last fall that an ordinance would pass, and I would get my conditional use permit to land a helicopter on my property. And please note that my Gold Lake lot is two hundred feet wide. I had nine out of eleven of my closest neighbors on my side, and again, bear in mind, this is a lot that is two hundred feet wide, surrounded by trees. Here in Scott County, we are talking about sixty-plus contiguous acres. I had two neighbors up there that started a lambasting website, stating non-factual information about myself and helicopters, and created such an uproar with deceit and lies. And, good old boy, lobbying in a small town, which would appear like they won, and I won't be able to land at my property. Mob rule prevailed, and please note that Gold Lake is far from over. I know Scott County understands what mob rule is, and that mob rule cannot apply, that facts must rule the day. I would like to make note of a couple of comments in the opposition's letter to the county. They say, "Since subject helicopter is a nineteen ninety-six vintage, it does not employ any best management practices." This does show their knowledge of aviation, and simply another deceitful comment. An aviation age is relative to hours, not year of the aircraft. And actually, nineteen ninety-six is not very old in aviation. Furthermore, my aircraft has just over three thousand hours total time, which is considered fairly new in aviation. In addition to the very low hours, after I purchased the helicopter, I spent over seven hundred thousand dollars making this one of the most up-to-date, modern, personal aircraft known to man. Most helicopter pilots out there have not flown with my avionics. Here's a comment from Skyline Helicopter Technologies, which is a company in Canada that spent six months retrofitting my aircraft. I quote, "This aircraft has been upgraded with a Genesis two-axis autopilot system and a state-of-the-art avionics flight deck, including a Garmin G500 HTXI primary flight display, multifunction display, a Garmin GTN 650 GPS, as well as a Garmin GTX 345 transponder with full automatic dependence surveillance broadcast, ADS-B in and out. These upgrades have substantially reduced the pilot workload and improved situational awareness inside the cockpit. Most recently, the installation of composite tail rotor blades have been added that greatly increases performance and also reduces noise by as much as forty percent, according to Van Horn Aviation. New polycarbonate wind screens, wire strike protection, terrain and avoidance systems, pulse lights that greatly increase the aircraft's visibility, software that provides three-dimensional map displays in the cockpit, all add to the aircraft's strong safety record and speaks well to my commitment to personal safety. The Bell two oh six series aircraft has proven itself in the industry with a hundred and fifty flight million, hundred and fifty million flight hours logged." End quote. Opposition also states, "The reason that neighbors are supporting me is that they all work for me. This is another deceiving lie. There's one person in the neighborhood that works for me, and has only been working for me for one year, but we've been neighbors and friends for fifteen years." If you want to consider a neighbor that owns a lawn sprinkler business that does my lawn sprinklers, then maybe I guess they're right. But, I'd like to show, from the landing site, I'd like to show a three hundred and sixty-degree view from the proposed helipad location. I've watched this multiple times, and, I don't know, I ask myself, I don't know how I have anybody against me on this. There's nobody around, and you're going to possibly see three houses, and the three houses that you will see are all in favor of me getting a heliport. So, the house you just saw was the Lovelace. And that's looking north, that would be my current property. Then you're going to see one more house here, which is the Faseels. They are in support as well. There's no other houses in view of this heliport location. So, next, Marty wanted me to show some video of takeoff, approach, and shutdown, so we'll start with takeoff. So, as you can see from a takeoff, once you hit forty knots, you raise up pretty fast and get out of noise pretty quickly as well on takeoff. And then, you got approach. So, the shutdown, what I'd like to explain is, once the aircraft is on the ground, it goes to idle at that point, and it's called a two-minute cooldown. So, I didn't play the whole two minutes, so I'll let you listen to this, and you'll see when it switches over. Yeah, and note that that's about fifty yards away. So, it goes down into idle mode for two minutes, and then you do a complete shutdown, pull the rotor brake, and the rotors come to a complete stop. So, a couple of significant points I'd like to make about my aircraft. The Bell two oh six series, mine is an L-four, which is the most recent of the two oh six series, is listed as the safest aircraft in the world. On top of that, I have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars putting in incredible avionics. It has autopilot. It flies itself with the push of buttons. It barks at me if I'm too close to wires, obstacles, towers. I have terrain features. I have bird-proof glass, wire-strike kit. And I make you guys aware of this because I love my life, I love my kids, I love my wife, I don't, I want to be the safest I can at whatever it is that I choose to do. People want to talk about the Kobe Bryant helicopter crash, and please know that I firmly believe that, without a doubt, they would be alive today if they had spent the money that I have on avionics. It's a horrible tragedy that gave the industry a black eye due to a pilot flying illegally due to weather conditions. My avionics would have saved their lives. Furthermore, I guarantee you that I will not take chances with weather. Life's too precious. Before I discuss facts briefly, I'd like to quote my next-door neighbor who couldn't be here tonight, and as he is at Lake of the Woods. "My name is Steve Hanson. I share a quarter-mile property line with Doug Schiefer. He has been a good neighbor and has made several attempts to keep peace here at Wildwood Drive. I believe him to be respectful, well-trained, skilled pilot with an exceptionally quiet machine. The fact that he can afford to lead the way towards the future of personal aviation is a good thing. I repeat, this is a good thing. Further, a man should be able to use his property as he desires. He has intended to comply with all the rules and regulations with all the various entities that one would anticipate jurisdiction. My property is considerably closer than those who are against this. I support all my neighbors and their desire to improve life, and I understand, to some people, this means restricting the future. But, it is the future. Let's move on." End quote. Facts about helicopters, which I will touch on briefly, and let Rex Alexander speak more in depth. Plus, I believe you have all received some backup data to what I am saying. No more noisy than a lawnmower, and noise only lasts for less than a couple of minutes. And I'm going to give one quote from Rob Mason, who is the city administrator and planning and zoning administrator for the city of East Gold Lake. Quote, "I videotaped the landing and takeoff," we did a test flight up there a year ago, so, quote, "I videotaped the landing and takeoff of the test helicopter that flew into your property back in July of two thousand and nineteen. The landing took around ninety seconds from the time I saw it coming across the lake, and the takeoff took around two minutes. In both cases, the sound was no louder than other noises that are frequently heard in our area, and the duration of sound was certainly relatively short compared to lawn and garden equipment or motorcycles that also frequent the area." Fuel is safer than ordinary gasoline. Some have asked, how do I provide fuel? So, I was going to show you a picture of a transfueller trailer. This is what I use. This trailer does not need to be licensed with the MPCA. We have checked with them. There's two reasons for that, but the main reason, you guys have a letter on that as Another fact, you got, there is zero proof out there that a personal heliport reduces property value. A person does not need to disclose a personal heliport in the event of a sale of their home. That was something else that Lauren and Jim were telling neighbors to sign the petition. There is no basis for environmental concern. We address the opposition's complaint about an eagle's nest in the area, and I plan to follow all regulations, whether it's MINDAT, FAA, DNR, fish and wildlife. There are guidelines to follow, which we recommend it as part of this conditional use permit. Lauren stated at our annual meeting that I was going to ruin the migratory birds, and I promise, from the bottom of my heart, I see more birds at airports than anywhere else. I promise you that. It is way more likely for a helicopter to maneuver around birds than an airplane. Rex will speak facts to that point as well. Note, during a one-week timeframe, my wife and a couple others in the neighborhood counted over a hundred low-flying aircraft directly over our neighborhood. To most people, I believe helicopters are interesting and fun to watch. To everyone else, they need to understand that we already have an enormous amount of aviation directly over our properties today. And regarding safety, we all know that people get hurt in cars, boats, four-wheelers, snowmobiles, walking across the street, et cetera. However, we all continue to live life. And note that, according to an FAA study, the likelihood of an incident at a heliport that conducts four hundred operations per year is one incident every four hundred and ninety-five years. Also note that no person from the general public has ever been injured or killed from an accident occurring at a private, ground-based heliport, such as the one I intend to utilize. This constitutes a hundred percent safety record for anyone not directly related to the aircraft. You cannot say the same about another type of vehicle on earth. I want to stress that I firmly believe my helicopter to be a safer method of transportation on a fair-weather day than any automobile. So, I know people paralyzed as a result of distracted driving. I recently had another coworker in a bad accident as a result of distracted driving. A couple of years ago, I myself was also a victim of distracted driving. I was at a standstill in a military Humvee when a seventeen-year-old kid trying to play Pandora on his phone hit me with a one-ton cargo van doing sixty miles an hour. Whether it's someone not paying attention, drugs, alcohol, and especially phones in my mind are horrible distractions and causing many, many accidents. I know I am very lucky to be alive today, and my family is blessed that my wife nor my kids were with me that day, as there is zero chance that they would be alive. The less time on the road, the safer myself and my family are. In addition to safety, please afford me the right to pursue my dreams, passions, additional time with my family, and use my property the way I want to use my property, especially when it has no more effect on my neighbors than everyday common occurrences. In fact, most of my neighbors prefer the helicopter. In the Wildwood Ponds development in which we live, there are sixteen homes, one is neutral, ten are for this, and five are opposed. If you look at all lots in Wildwood Ponds, then there is fifteen in support and five opposed. Thank you very much. I'll turn this over to Rex Alexander, and then I believe you wanted to discuss conditions. That's all right. So, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, do we ask questions now or later?
You can. Ms. Schiefer, if you want to stand up here for one more second there, Commissioners may have questions for you right now before you sit down. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Schiefer, you said that your insurance, you had two and a half years of training, but your insurance company made you train with your own, I wrote down a reg. How many additional hours of training did you have that your insurance company requested?
The insurance company stepped in and won. The insurance company stepped in and wanted me to have a hundred flight hours with training with a pilot that had three thousand hours in this type of aircraft. There's a lot of groundwork that goes in. There's a lot of schooling that goes in to obtaining your helicopter license. As far as the flight portion goes, the FAA typically requires fifty hours before you can test out. My insurance company stepped in and wanted me to have a hundred hours in my specific aircraft.
Okay. Do you consider yourself an experienced pilot?
I would rather let Rex attest to that and/or Dominic Manier Sebel, my trainer. He's here tonight as well.
And then, once you stop your helicopter, land it, and you turn off the rotors, how do you move it? Like if you want to put it into a shed, how do you move it?
Sure. I have two different mechanisms currently. Both are electric. You don't hear them. One is a sixteen-by-sixteen called heliwagon. So you land on the sixteen-by-sixteen heliwagon, and it's a remote control. The whole wagon drives itself. The other thing that I have right now currently down in Faribault is called a Tiger Tug. And that is a mechanism, same deal. It's battery-operated, electric. It goes underneath the helicopter, grabs onto the skids, lifts it up, and then you drive it to where you're going via remote control.
And I think this is about the last thing. Today, I watched the five o'clock news. It's a nice day today, and on Gray Cloud Island, a plane had crashed. I think there's three dead. I don't know what kind of plane it was or anything, but it was just kind of a downer for me to have this tonight, and I turned on the news and saw that, and it was...
Yeah, unfortunately, in America, especially with helicopters, now accidents happen no matter... I mean, I couldn't tell you how many car accidents there were today. That's probably because it happens every single day. Helicopters in general, anytime there is an accident in the entire United States, you hear about that. It's unfortunate. I am not going to deny that accidents don't happen, but there is zero doubt in my mind, again, and I want to stress a good, fair-weather day, because that's just something you don't want to mess with in a helicopter, is weather. That's something I won't mess with. But on a good, fair-weather day, there is no doubt in my mind that a helicopter is safer than hopping in a vehicle and driving down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schiefer?
Doug, as far as fueling, you plan to fuel on-site, I assume that?
That is correct.
As far as maintenance, I assume there's a maintenance plan and that you'll have, I guess, expert mechanics looking at for the maintenance issue on it?
Yes. The mechanics that are involved, it'd be nice to find someone local, but I trust these guys out of Canada. They've eaten dinner with my family. I forced them to fly this thing for five hours after they've done anything to it, and they think I'm nuts that I pay for them to do that. But stranger things have happened, and I'd rather pay for that five hours. If that thing flies for five hours and they haven't had one problem, then I know I'm good. Plus, it forces them to make sure it's good, too. So I use mechanics, Skyline helicopter technologies out of Canada.
Okay. As far as weather, I assume like anybody else would watch the weather and make decisions when to go or not go?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners at this time? How many total flight hours do you have right now?
Just shy of two hundred.
And over a hundred in this, in the Bell 206 L4?
There would be north of a hundred and sixty in this aircraft, I believe.
Any other questions by the commissioners at this time? We may have more questions for you.
Right on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'll bring up my presentation. So my goal tonight is to give you the information you need to make a good decision. Try to provide you with facts based in the science and based on my experience, and separate that from any fiction that may have come through. I know that Mr. Schmitz has provided you with a couple of other documents that I've already provided. Hopefully, those were helpful. This will be building on those documents as well. So a little bit about myself. I've been in the helicopter industry for... since nineteen eighty-six when I joined the Army. So I've been developing heliports and auditing and as an expert witness for about twenty years for heliports. Worked as a helicopter air ambulance pilot, base manager, safety manager, regional director for about twenty years. Mayo Clinic was one of my clients. I worked with all three of their bases, both here in Minnesota and also in Eau Claire, Wisconsin. I work with a group called the U.S. Helicopter Safety Team, and our goal is to reduce accidents in the helicopter industry. I work with the infrastructure group and am the co-chair of that group, and specialize in identifying ways to make that infrastructure safer and work closely with all different parties, both regulatory-wise and the government as well as industry. Former U.S. Army helicopter pilot, instructor pilot, and standards instructor, both in the active Army and in the National Guard. I serve on the National Fire Protection Association 418 Committee, which is the code group that designs fire code for heliports. I've been on that committee for eleven years, and I'm one of the guys that actually has written some of the code that's in there. I work with the Helicopter Association International. HAI is the largest helicopter industry group for the global area, and serve on their heliport working group as a liaison. While working as an EMS pilot, was president and board member of the National EMS Pilots Association for several years. I serve as a guest lecturer and speaker for the Transportation Safety Institute in Oklahoma City. I teach accident investigation for the advanced course to FAA and NTSB, and specialize in heliport accident investigation. I also help them develop their original heliport evaluation course that we run FAA and NTSB and DOT inspectors through. I work with the U.S. Helicopter Safety Team as the industry liaison on the advisory circular that the FAA publishes. That's the AC150-539-2C heliport design. I was also at one time the president and a board member of the Indiana Association of Air Medical Services. And currently, I'm actually the Vertical Flight Society, who used to be the American Helicopter Society's industry liaison for their six thousand members to the FAA, all the manufacturers in the helicopter industry, and now the air taxi urban air mobility world, and work with international groups in European market and also what's called ICAO. That's the International Civil Aviation Organization. These are some of the groups that I work with, both professionally and on a business level. I've got three contracts now with NASA doing research and development in this space. I work really closely with the bird strike committees, and do some research with them in the U.S. Helicopter Safety Team, very closely with the FAA in this space, and have written several papers in this space. So, real quick, the regulations and codes and guidance that we look to that governs this area. So what is a heliport? Well, first, we look at what standards apply. And in our case, in this case, Federal Aviation Administration, and we'll talk more about each one of these as we go through, the National Fire Protection Association, International Building Code, International Fire Code. Then there's the state, which in this case would be the Department of Transportation from Minnesota and the Aeronautics Division. Great group of people, have worked with them. Then the local, what we're doing here right now. So the local, county, township, city, municipality, and what governing codes that they have in place. So the two design guides that we primarily lean on is the one that you've probably heard the most about is the Federal Aviation Administration's Advisory Circular, which is the design guide. The current version is the 2C, was revised and updated in 2012. This is under revision right now. It's internal to the FAA. It should be released to the public hopefully in the next month. It'll be out for sixty days. Probably the next revision you'll see is published in January or February. Not a lot of changes, based on what I've seen. Then the other one is the National Fire Protection Association. There's guidance in there specifically from the fire code, but they then point to the NFPA... Or the NFPA then points to the FAA and talks to that being the design guide. So the FAA's heliport design guide is the primary for the United States when it comes to the design of the heliport. Now, as far as the regulations, so that's an advisory circular. The regulations that we look for is Part 77 and Part 157. I won't go into the detail on this, but when you're looking for the information, safe, efficient use and preservation of navigable airspace is 77. And then the notice, construction alteration, activation, deactivation of an airport is the process, is Part 157. So FAA oversight. Now, this is where it gets a little interesting because you have different quantifications of what a heliport or airport for that matter are. So you have public and you have private. So the FAA goes out of their way to specifically state that the use of their advisory circular is not mandatory, specifically for private facilities. It is for public, and especially for public that have used federal grant money. Now, out of the close to six thousand heliports in the United States, ninety-nine point one percent are private use. Point nine percent are public use. So almost everything in the U.S. is private, and no federal grant money has been used except for three. Now, they go on to say that other federal agencies, that could be any one of those agencies, like the Department of the Interior or work with them, they have guidance. States like the state of Minnesota or authorities having jurisdictions or what we refer to as the AHJ, and this, it would be the county fire marshal would have say in what goes on in this if NFPA 418 or International Fire Code have been adopted, which I'm guessing they probably have. So they have the jurisdiction. The FAA does not, and they say this plainly. To the extent that they choose to do so, the design of the private heliports is regulated not by the FAA but by the fifty states. So one of the falsehoods you get into is certification. The FAA does not certify heliports. There's no licensing from the federal government. All they do is they come in and do an airspace evaluation to make sure that your heliport and your airspace aren't going to interfere with other airspace. In the state of Minnesota, they have a license. So the administrative rules on private heliport licensing, there's guidelines in there in 88-2100, and it talks about the license. There's also what's called personal use in the state of Minnesota. This is one of the few states that has this. So private, you have to get a license, but a personal use, and they quantify the exemption as anything greater than five miles is not required to have a license by the state of the DOT. Now, the FAA still wants you to file under Part 157, but the Minnesota State DOT would not require a license. Mr. Schiefer's heliport would fall as a personal use because there are no heliports within or airports or any aviation facility within five miles. But he is elected to go ahead and get private because it puts him at a slightly higher level, and we'll have the Minnesota DOT work with us on that. So the guidance from the FAA, the Minnesota DOT has a heliport design guide as well. They reference the DOT information to the advisory circular. So there's really not a whole lot of differences. There's one or two very specific items that they call out that, I won't say that are different. They want to add that to it to make sure that they're covering. One specific one is, the FAA will allow for one approach/departure path. Minnesota DOT wants two, and it wants to make sure that those are at least ninety degrees separation. Reason being is that allows the pilot to deal with wind conditions, whereas a single approach and departure path won't allow him to deal with all wind conditions. In our case, we actually have the capability to have three, so we can deal with pretty much every wind condition, and we'll go through that in more depth. So, and we've already heard as far as what Scott County talks about, it requires a specific zone. RR1 is one of those, and this is the land that we're looking to put that heliport. I've been to this location. I've done a full audit of this location. Did it in concert with the Minnesota DOT at the same time. We were both up there. I wish all my clients had a location this good, this clear, and this open. You'd be amazed at some of the places I have to put heliports. So when we look at this county, there are actually seven private-owned, private-use facilities in the county per FAA database. Now, what's on your database, I don't know, but this is FAA database. So we have one heliport, a number of airports, and two seaplane bases. But they're all private, and they're all private use. And then, in the definition of both Minnesota and the FAA, a heliport, a seaplane base, a glider port, a balloon port are all airports, per definition. So as far as a heliport goes... Oops, did I go back too far? So the FAA C talks about what the basic elements are. Clear approach/departure path, clear area for ground maneuver. Final approach and takeoff area, that's referred to as a FATO. We'll talk more about that. And the touchdown lift-off area, the TLFOF. Safety area and a wind cone. Also, most people say windsock. Or, and if you're going to do night operations, you're required to have lighting, both perimeter of the heliport as well as a windsock with lights, either inside or outside. So in looking at this site, this site under consideration tonight, we'll have all the FAA basic elements, and we'll meet, or exceed, all FAA, DOT, and NFPA requirements based on my current audit. What are we designed to? We're designed to the design helicopter. And that then incorporates several different factors. So the design aircraft in this is the Bell 206 L4. So it is considered by the FAA a light helicopter because it's below seven thousand pounds. Medium would be seven thousand to twelve-five-hundred, and heavy would be twelve thousand, five-hundred and greater. Main rotor diameter is thirty-seven feet. Overall length is forty-two-point-four. Max gross weight is forty-four-fifty. Now, we get into this particular aircraft, you know, it's one of those things. You buy a new car, and you get that book in the back that tells you all the maintenance you're supposed to do, when you're supposed to do it, how often, and how many miles. Most people don't do that. Well, in the aviation world, we don't have that choice. To be able to fly the aircraft, we have to adhere to the manufacturer's maintenance schedule. And everything on the aircraft is based on cycles. Every time I start an aircraft engine, shut it down, it's cycled. It's based on hours, and it's based on calendars. So while it may be a 1996 aircraft, I doubt that there's too many components on there that are 1996. Most have either been replaced or overhauled and put back on. The tolerances we have to meet when it comes to inspection is, being a licensed airframe and power plant mechanic myself and working in the industry in that company, I can tell you is pretty tight compared to the automotive industry. We have inspections every hundred hours. We have to do an annual inspection. We also have component inspections at specific component times and hours. And then there's also airworthiness directives that the manufacturer sends out that we have to comply with, or we can't fly the aircraft. As Doug said, the insurance company plays a huge role in this. They would not let you fly an aircraft if it didn't meet those standards, and they would not insure you. And looking at what Doug's done to his aircraft, I wish I had one like this. I haven't seen this many nice safety additives in most of the aircraft. I flew as an EMS pilot and definitely not in the Army. So as a helicopter pilot, I have about three thousand hours in this aircraft. The Bell 206, in the military, I was an instructor. Flew the 206 variants of the Alpha, the Bravo. Then offshore in the Gulf of Mexico, flew the Long Rangers. Then in the National Guard, and then also have some time in the variant, which is the 407. So about three thousand hours. As an instructor, I would say the 206 is probably one of the most forgiving helicopters I've ever flown. As an instructor, it's definitely nice to have that on your side. It's got a rotor system that is probably the best rotor system I've ever done auto rotations with. And if you don't know what an auto rotation is, it's basically doing a landing with power off. We don't cut the power. We turn it to idle. But I've done full-stop autos in the 206 as an instructor, day and night, and it is a dream to fly. The one that I flew in EMS, the Bell, or the BK-117, is a four-bladed system. Drops like a greased brick compared to the 206. The 206 is a wonderful aircraft for any emergency, and also for training and for flying. The two oh six is a wonderful aircraft for any emergency and also for training and for flying. So heliport layout, when we talk about that, we already talked about the TLOF for the touchdown lift off area. That's one times rotor diameter. The FATO, one point five times the overall length. And then there's a safety area, which is one-third the rotor diameter. In this case would be approximately thirteen. So we're looking at a footprint of the hard stand that we're going to put in. It's thirty-seven foot in diameter. Now, the FATO and safety area aren't marked. They're basically areas that we have to keep clear. So when the aircraft approaches and takes off, it's got a nice clean airspace to maneuver, nothing to hit. And that's one of the things the FAA is going to come in and make sure. And so is the DOT. So this is what the standard size for that aircraft would be. If we were to have a larger aircraft, we'd need to make this bigger. If we had a smaller one, we could go smaller. As far as the lighting goes, there are several different lights out there. These are two variants that I've used. The FAA has photometrics on these so that the lights are specifically designed to be seen by the pilot at angles of approach, more so than people on the ground. I'm not saying you wouldn't be able to see them, but they're green and they're LEDs. So they're not like an intrusive white light or orange light or something like that. And these are flush mounted so they wouldn't stick up. That's one of the things, we want to make sure that that TLOF, FATO, safety area, don't have any penetrations. The only thing that we're allowed to put in there is the lights and two inches is as high as they can be. So that's the heliport itself. But the key element tonight is probably the airspace. So what's the airspace look like and how do we design that? So this is out of the FAA's guidance. This is the AC. So on the left is a straight approach. On the right is a curved approach. Curved approaches we put in when we need to maneuver around something. Be it an obstruction, be it a noise sensitive area. But that green area is an eight to one ratio. So seven point one two five. So every eight feet you go out, you come up one foot. It starts the width of that FATO we talked about. Goes four thousand feet out and it spreads out to five hundred feet. Now, the blue area that you see is the transitional zone. That's a two to one surface. When we look at what we can do in the private sector, that this is designed primarily for the public sector, we have an option, which is in this case, the eight to one is exactly the same. But we do away with the two to ones and then put in two extensions on the eight to one. And that's what we use for the FAA as far as this. And we can do both curved and straight. And in that, it's still four thousand feet long, still the eight to one ratio. Starts out the width of the FATO and goes out to five hundred feet wide. Now, one thing to point out is helicopter pilots don't fly that eight to one. That's a seven point one two five ratio. That is the airspace that the FAA is going to come out and the Minnesota DOT is going to come out and look at to make sure that there's nothing penetrating that airspace, an obstruction, a tower, a building, a tree. If something penetrates that eight to one, then we have to relocate that approach, departure path until it's clear. What the pilot's going to fly is not the surface, but it's the approach angle. Now, the rotorcraft handbook talks to what those are. So you have shallow, and I can tell you most helicopter pilots don't fly a shallow approach unless they're at an airport. Most people in the helicopter world fly at least ten to twelve degrees, which is a considered a normal approach. A steep approach by the definition of the FAA is fifteen. I can tell you in the military, we go a lot steeper than fifteen degrees. But I listed out what that looks like on a side view as far as the altitudes the aircraft would be at, at those different positions. So you can see the orange line is that eight to one. A seven degree shallow approach puts you just above that to the center of the heliport. Remember that the measurement for that surface is actually taken from the edge of the FATO. So it's actually farther out. So at twelve degrees, we're much higher. And the good thing with twelve or fifteen or steeper approach is that also decreases your noise footprint on the ground versus a shallow approach because we get a little farther away. So this is the flight path, if you will, that we've designed. This is based on my audit and also with talking to the folks at the FAA and running this by them. So these are the different ones that I looked at. So this would be then the surfaces that we have to pay attention to. Now, again, the flight path and the surface are two different animals. This is what the FAA is going to look for for being clear. So I tried to do this individually. So this is the approach, departure path that's curved to the north. That's the flight path. And I point out the power pole because we wanted to pay close attention to where that's at and what height that is in relationship to that eight to one. Because there's a criteria that we look for and I'll show you what that looks like for lighting and marking. So there's the airspace that corresponds to that. We tried to put the approach, departure path right over the pole, specifically knowing that that's the highest point versus putting it over the sag in the middle of the wires. That'll be the point that we put in the GPS as a control point. So he can fly over that and know at what altitude and what location he's at. Now, this is the marking criteria out of the advisory circular. So that diagram that we saw with the straight and the curved, that's the surface. Now, under, where you see the yellow area, there's a surface that's the eight to one mirrors that, that starts eight hundred feet from the FATO. And that's the surface we look for. If we get a penetration of that surface, the FAA recommends it be lighted and marked. So we're looking for anything that falls above that plane. And in doing the calculations based on the heliport elevation, the ground elevation where the pole's at, being a hundred and fifty foot pole, measuring out all the distances. As far as the FAA is not required, nor is it recommended in that zone because it falls below that zone. So the twelve degrees, he'll be about five hundred and nine feet above the top of the pole on approach at twelve degrees. The eight to one runs right at two hundred and sixty feet above the pole. So. This approach is to the west. And we, again, look for terrain because this is predominantly the highest point in the area. So we look for terrain that drops off, reduces any obstruction or potential for obstruction later. And also we avoided houses wherever they were. So this does not fly over a house. And it also flies over a wetland where houses won't be built. There's the eight to one and extensions for that one that the FAA will validate as well as the DOT. And then this is the one to the south. I've got a little something later on that talks about, we shifted this about fifteen degrees. This is again, goes from a high point to a low point over non-inhabited land. And there's the surfaces that we look for. All these were designed in a CAD system so that we can have the maximum accuracy in this. So safety is a concern. I've seen several of the comments that have come through. And I tried to address some of that already in the reports that I sent you. To overlook some of this. The FAA had done accident research specific to heliports. It's three different ones done back at the points between the late eighties through the early nineties. And one of the things they found was heliports that were not designed in accordance with their design guide or their advisory circular had a much higher propensity to have an accident.
This meeting is being recorded.
They hit something that wasn't supposed to be there. So that's why we do all that we do in looking at those approach, departure paths, the TLOFs, the Fatos and the safetiers, to make sure there's nothing there. Because we know if we leave something there, there's a higher risk exposure. So that was one of the things that the FAA will come in and the DOT and make sure that those are completely clear. So this is the accident rate that they looked at from the analysis. The risk of a heliport accident occurring in a neighborhood in the vicinity of a specific heliport is extremely rare event. That's from the FAA report. The likelihood of an accident near a heliport that has four hundred annual helicopter operations is approximately one accident every four hundred and ninety-five years. Now, I worked with the US Helicopter Safety Team. They did a deep dive on all the accidents between nineteen sixty-five and two thousand and thirteen. And we basically validated what the FAA said, that most of the accidents occurred at heliports that did not meet the FAA design guide. And then in that, when we looked at what impact accidents had on the public, when it came to private use heliports like this, it basically is a rarity. It's got a perfect safety record. There's never been an accident in a private heliport such as this where anyone from the public has ever been injured or killed. One of the concerns that's come up in some of the documentation was rotor wash and what that looks like and how strong that is. So I have a really good friend of mine, Rory Freely, who's in the Marines, who happens to be the commandant of the Naval Test Pilot School at Pax River. So I ran the math by him. He said, this is a little bit simplified, but I said, I need a worst case scenario. So this is the math that goes behind what rotor wash looks like. So the maximum rotor wash you're going to get from a helicopter is going to occur at one point five rotor diameter height above the ground to two rotor diameters, two being the maximum. So thirty-seven feet rotor diameter, estimate that the worst case would be at double that, or seventy-four. That's where you're going to get the most, at a standstill hover. So we said, okay, worst case is a hover at two times RD. So the formula we use is basically from the test pilot school. And we figured out what that distance was based on that rotor diameter. So between two hundred and sixty-one feet to three hundred and forty-eight feet, that's where you're going to see the worst case. And that's only if somebody stops on approach. If they're continually flying, it's probably going to be half of what that is. So plotted that out and all those areas are on Mr. Schiefer's property. And those green dots, those are four rotor diameters in height. And in flight, we go through what's called effective transational lift. And above effective transational lift at four RD, all rotor wash dissipates before it gets to the ground. So those, inside those three dots would be the only area you would ever see rotor wash. And only in those yellow areas would it be the worst from therein. And at the most, go back to my math, the number there in the green chart in the center bottom, the worst case scenario would be forty miles an hour based on max gross weight. Now, as weight reduces, that number's going to go down because it's a direct contingent on that. I can tell you that the aircraft will probably never land max gross weight because it'll always have burned fuel off. And only if you put full fuel and put a person in each seat will you ever be at max gross weight. So noise is a point of contention with every heliport. So the one on the left is a noise and sound chart from a good friend of mine who is an acoustician, Norman Dotty. Runs a company called Russell Acoustics. And I've done at least seven sound studies with him. The one on the right is the Flying Neighborly Helicopter Association International document. It's, you can download that online. That's their comparison chart that they use. So it gives you an idea of what the comparison of other noise producers are in comparison to helicopters. Again, they look at the Bell two oh six as a light helicopter and that is under seven thousand pounds. Other noise producers in most general areas. And when you look at what the ambient noise is, all over the place. So we see noise producers in a lot of cases that mask what the helicopter does. We've done noise studies, landed, and the zoning commission's called and asked, when are you going to do the noise study? I said, well, we've been flying for thirty minutes. Well, we never heard you. Well, next time we'll bring you out and let you see it. But that's kind of a norm for us. Now, and the good thing is, is the Minnesota, the state of Minnesota has guidance. A lot of states don't have this guidance because there are several different ways you can do a noise study. And there's not a lot of agreement in that space on how that should be done, what standards you should use and what measurements you should go by. But Minnesota has those. And I guess the question is to the board, is that the standard you guys look to use in this case? Is Minnesota guidance on noise and noise standards? Is that, is the state guidance the one that the county will use?
Yes.
Okay. So in looking at that, I sent this out to my two friends that I work with in the acoustics world. Mr. Schmitz had sent me a document that he'd received. And it had a noise study from nineteen seventy-nine. And asked me to make sure that I commented on that. So I sent that to my two acoustical friends. And the first one, his name is David Josephson. I worked with him at Uber. Uber has an aviation division. I worked with as their infrastructure, head of infrastructure for a short period of time. But worked with Mr. Josephson and NASA in this space. And I asked him to comment on the study. Short quote, he said, "The figures quoted in the report and the currently available certification metrics published as part of an aircraft type certificate data are an EPNL decibels, which is a specialized weighting used only for certification to different stage ratings and long-term airport noise exposure studies. In general, for heliports, PNL of ninety decibels equates to a maximum A-weighted sound pressure level, what you would measure with a regular sound level meter of about ten decibels less or eighty decibels." Now, I've been in courts of law with acousticians and they have embarrassed the heck out of many a lawyer because acoustics is an extraordinarily complicated environment. The formulas and the physics that go into that will eat your lunch in a court of law. So it's very, very important that we make sure that we get the right data. Now, the other gentleman was not quite nearly as eloquent as Mr. Josephson was. Mr. Dotty runs Russell Acoustics. He said, well, he's mixing walnuts and peanuts. He thinks a decibel is a decibel. And that in there lies the challenge. Decibels are not equal. It depends on how you measure it and how you equate it. So you have to be very careful. You end up, as I say later, mixing apples and oranges. So the state of Minnesota, and this is directly out of their document, talks about three different classification, classification one being residential and the daytime versus nighttime capabilities. Now, they do a one hour noise study and they average that noise. Now, they have a caveat that during a ten percent, L-ten period, six minutes, you can have upwards of sixty-five decibels. Now, that is not a single event, that's a weighted average. So you can have something that's above that, as long as that average is sixty-five or below, you're still okay. The L-50 would be half, half of an hour, thirty minutes. So basically, this means that during a one hour period of monitoring, daytime noise average levels cannot exceed sixty-five DBA, averaged levels being the key. In an area classified as NAC one or residential for more than ten percent of the time, six minutes. Additionally, an average noise cannot exceed sixty DBA in an area classified as NAC one, fifty percent of the time, thirty minutes. This then infers that for less than a six minute duration, a ten minute, ten percent period, a noise produces, is in fact allowed to create noise greater than sixty-five decibels as long as the six minute average is less than sixty-five. So by reducing the number of operations in that six minute period, we can meet that criteria. Now, it's important to point out that I have a app on my phone that's a decibel meter. It'll tell me which noise is louder than the other one. However, when you do in a study by anybody or in a court of law, Minnesota does say that it has to be a specific type of equipment. It has to be certified to ANSI standards. And then it talks about what those are. And before the study's done, it has to be calibrated. And after the study's done, it has to be calibrated to make sure that those readings are absolutely accurate. So if you get in a court of law and somebody comes up and say, hey, I have this recording. Well, if it's just a voice recording, that doesn't hold up in a court of law. If I say, hey, I've got this on my cellphone, that will not hold up in a court of law. Some people laugh, but I've seen that done. So as far as sounds go, a couple of key elements you gotta keep in mind. The FAA published aircraft certification numbers. aircraft certification numbers are decibel metric that is used, not used anywhere else except for specific certifications. The aircraft certifies to a noise level, but those are not the same numbers that we use when it comes to community noise evaluation. And a lot of people pull the wrong numbers. Now, every time you double the distance, so if I'm at a hundred feet and I go to two hundred feet, you can expect a drop of six decibels. If I go from two hundred to four hundred, you can expect an additional drop of six decibels, and so on and so forth. That's the basic rule of thumb. But like we talked earlier on terminology, the following down there at the bottom, each one of those is something to do with a decibel. So we have decibel, we have decibel alpha, Charlie and Zulu, we have SEL, which is single event, decibel, DNL, which is day-night level decibel. It's very, very critical that you know what numbers you're using, because again, we're talking apples and oranges if you mix them up. And that's why I rely very heavily on an acoustician to come in and keep me honest, because I am not a trained acoustician. I have worked with them many years, and I know enough to say that I am not an expert in that field. Now, one of the things I'd point out is like, the helicopter itself, in this case, is gonna be a transitory noise. It's gonna come and go pretty rapidly. So how long is that point? If I'm standing here and the aircraft flies from point A to point B, it's gonna come into my sense of hearing range, it's gonna peak out, and then it's gonna start to dissipate. That period of time is generally running about thirty to sixty seconds on any given day, and then it's gonna disappear. So it's gonna peak at some point, but then it's going to drop off on the front and the back, and that's what we're looking at in that noise average during that six minutes, what's the average of that? So that's why we measure that information. So this came from the Scott County Staff Report, directly out of page four. The Scott County Environmental Health Department reviewed the proposal, and it concurs with the applicant's assessment that the heliport will not exceed state noise standards. And from what I've shown the acousticians, they have both agreed, and they said they could even do mathematical workups to show that. One question comes up is, what does a heliport do to property values? So there are five studies there that point to noise and property values. The thing is, every single one of them is for large airports. So if you've seen one of these, they're like for Los Angeles International, John Wayne International. There are no good studies on the market anywhere that speak specifically to heliports and property values anywhere. So, I wish there were, and I'm hoping we can actually do a study in that space at some point in the near, near future. So then we get into the environmental impact of a helicopter. So emissions, so, given that this is a turboshaft engine, the FAA recognizes it, so does the International Civil Aviation Organization. And in there, they talk about what is required to meet certain criteria. And they go as far to say, "These regulations do not apply to the following aircraft engines, turboshaft engines such as those used in helicopters." Primary reason is the turboshaft engine, like the one that's in the Bell 206, which is a Rolls-Royce, burns so efficiently and so hot, there is really no exhaust emissions to speak of in parts per million particulates compared to, say, a piston engine in a car or in an airplane. So by these standards, helicopter turboshaft engines are exempt. Now, fuel and oil, I know there was a concern about hazardous materials. I spoke to that in the report on concerns. They're really, we don't carry hazardous materials on the aircraft. We actually, if it's quantified by the DOT as a hazardous material or hazmat situation, it's illegal to carry hazardous materials. So what do we do have on the aircraft? Well, we have fuel, jet fuel, which is basically highly refined kerosene, and I use a kerosene heater in my house because it's so safe. It's not the same as gasoline that you put in your car. Its flashpoint is much lower. You can actually throw a match into a puddle of kerosene, and in a lot of times, it'll go out, because it just doesn't have the flashpoint. So helicopters don't discharge or leak fuel on a regular basis. You just don't see it. The likelihood of a fuel spill in itself is pretty remote. The only time we've ever seen that in any quantity is improper fueling or during a maintenance operation where the aircraft's fuel system got compromised. One of the things that, you know, I talked to Mr. Schiefer about is having a fuel spill kit, and we get those from Granger. We keep those at all the heliports that I service, and that will keep anything from ever getting into the environment if there is ever a fuel spill. Hazardous materials, like we said, from a safety standpoint, the, you have more hazardous materials in your garage and in your home than are probably in that aircraft. When you talk about, you know, the ATVs, motorcycles and automobiles, when you look at poisons, when you look at flammable materials and things like that, pesticides and the like, we don't carry those, and it's illegal to carry those. So the things that you'll see on our aircraft are jet fuel, oil, and hydraulic fluid. Well, we talk about bird strikes. I work closely with the groups called the FAA's Wildlife Strike Association Group, and we work with the USDA in that space. So I asked them for their statistics on this space for helicopters. And the study they had from 1990 to 2005, out of all the birds struck by aircraft, only point six percent reported to involve helicopters. Now, one of the reasons that helicopter is such a lower is that most of the bird strikes we see are with larger aircraft, like Jetliner, 737s and above. And a 737's not gonna dodge a bird. Number one, the closure rate is so great, he probably won't see it. But two, it costs a lot of money to go around in an airport like Minneapolis International. So we see a lot of bird strikes with those. Helicopters are usually on approach or departure at a much slower rate, and also have the consideration for maneuverability. Now, does sixty-three percent of the bird strikes to helicopters, seventy-seven percent of the damaging strikes occurred during en route phase? So we see the most birds struck en route versus landing and takeoff. Ninety percent of all the reported bird strikes with civil helicopters occurred at indicated airspeeds in excess of sixty knots. Ninety-seven percent of the strikes causing damage occurred in excess of sixty knots. So, once we get to speed, then we see the problem. But at the lower speeds, like we're having at the heliport during landing and takeoff, we don't see that problem. This is based on the FAA's Wildlife Strike Database. Now, I've been told that there is an eagle's nest near this facility. So we asked the Wildlife Strike Protection System, or the Wildlife Strike Group, sorry, how many eagles have ever been hit by aircraft? So between 1990 and 2019, twenty-nine years, there's been a total of three hundred and fifteen eagles, bald eagles specifically, that have been struck by an aircraft. Minnesota, there's been twenty-two in that timeframe. Most of them have happened at Minneapolis International, or the other major airport, I can't remember, KSTP downtown, they've had ten. In the realm of striking by helicopters in the US, there's only been two. One was in Alaska, one happened in Minnesota, and the one in Minnesota was struck at eight hundred feet en route over Flying Cloud Airport in Minneapolis. So there's never been an eagle struck by a helicopter during approach and departure from a heliport. Number one, eagles are a little smarter than that and pay very close attention, plus the helicopter is going much slower than what you would see in the airline industry. Now, the guidance on national bald eagle management, under category G helicopter fixed wing, basically says that we need to make sure that we avoid eagle's nests by a thousand feet, especially during breeding season. If, unless they've shown tolerance to such items. And the only person that can do that is probably going to be a biologist or somebody from the Department of Natural Resources. So in looking at that southern approach, we actually moved that about fifteen degrees. So, the information I got was where the eagle's nest is located, we'd measured out one thousand feet, we moved that fifteen degrees, and that gave us an additional two hundred and fifty feet. So now we're twelve hundred and fifty feet, which is two fifty, above what's required by the National Eagle Act. So we wanna make sure that we take that into account. My final comments, you know, suitability. Again, this site is an excellent site. I wish all my clients came with me with this type of a site. I do a lot of hospital heliports, and those are very challenging, because everybody's usually wants to look the other way, because, well, we wanna save lives. And I was like, "Well, yeah, I do too, but I don't wanna endanger them at the same time. You have to do it right." In this case, we can do it right. Regulatory compliance, this site will meet and exceed all federal, state, and local regulations and code requirements, not a problem. Safety, again, heliports such as this, when designed and built to FAA specs, have an excellent safety record as it applies to surrounding community and public. We have the data that shows and proves that. And then, I would, I would warn you, just be careful. I've done this for twenty years, and this is probably about the fiftieth or more zoning commission hearings I've been to. What you find on the internet is not always correct. Be careful what you get from different people. Make sure that you vet it closely. There's a lot of misinformation out there that have political agendas and hidden agendas. I hope, my goal here is to inform you with facts, so that at the end of the day, you can make an informed decision, whatever that decision is. And I open the floor to any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do you want to have questions at this point?
Mr. Chair, as far as flight patterns, when I looked out there, it looks like coming from the south seemed like the ideal, but you mentioned coming from the wind affects that a little bit, and the eagles are to the south, but you can keep far enough away. I mean, what's your opinion, the south approach or the west approach are ideal, or does it matter?
I'd say they're both equal as far as their capability. You mentioned a very good point. One of the things that we do look at is the historical data for the winds in the area. That does affect the approach. So I looked at the ten-year oversight from NOAA on what the winds are here, and that's part of that is based on that.
Mr. Chair, one other question, just a side note here. I was stationed in the military at Fort Rucker. I assume you spent some time at Fort Rucker, Alabama?
I spent a lot of time at Fort Rucker, both as a warrant officer candidate, as a student pilot, and as an instructor pilot.
It's the headquarters of the US Army helicopter training program there. Okay, thank you.
I did so well at Rucker, they sent me to Korea. I did so good at Korea, they sent me to Fort Polk, so let's not go there.
You're lucky.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson.
I'm confused, because Friday, did you send me something else from Mr. Alexander?
Should, there were two documents. One was a document concerning, was addressing the concerns was one document. The other one was, what I put together was an expert report on the heliport.
Is that the one?
That's the one you got.
That's the one, I have some questions on.
Okay.
Do we have, like, on page three, number seven, I don't know if we have it, but...
I don't have it up, but go ahead.
It was, I just wrote down security, we are left hanging, I didn't know.
Okay. Well, and that's one of those things, we do advise that we have security. Now, the good thing is, is he has so much land that I don't have to worry as much, because it's not open to the public, it's on private property. Usually when we get into security, it's like at a hospital, and you have this open area where any pedestrian can walk across to a parking lot and get to it. In his case, Mr. Schiefer's case, we don't have that issue. We have the capability of putting up a fence on the perimeter, and that would equate to the security. Now, the FAA doesn't require security, they recommend security. The key you want to do is put something in place that would keep the average person who may be curious out of that area. That could be, I like to use holly bushes myself, because they're really stickery. And I have had individuals climb fences. We had an incident in Maine where we had a gentleman climb a six-foot fence and jump on the aircraft while it was taking off, which was an EMS helicopter. So a fence is only going to keep out the honest people. If the individual wants to get to that helicopter, they're going to jump that fence. That's why I use a barrier like a shrub that's deep, and most people don't like to tangle with holly. I found my perspective. But yes, security is, is something we really pay very close attention to at like hospital heliports, and I've done some work with the Navy, they're very keen on security. But for the size area that we have here, we're probably gonna have, see motion detectors put in.
Mr. Chairman, if I may continue. Page seven, fire. Does Scott County have a plan? You mentioned something about fire, but...
So, one of the things with the National Fire Protection Association, what we'll do is put together what they refer to as an emergency action plan. So, you know, in the worst case, we'll have a plan in place, and we'll work with the local fire marshal to make sure that we get that in place per his purview. And then we'll go out and actually bring fire, the fire department out to practice that. But we'll actually create a fire, an emergency action plan and a manual for that specific purpose, and work with the fire department here, local.
And number, page ten, you talk about airspace rights. The FAA cannot prevent construction of a radio tower, easement rights defined. If somebody down ways away wanted to put up a tower, you cannot stop them from doing that? You might have to amend your flight pattern then?
We would have to change the approach/departure path if that occurred, and we saw that eight-to-one penetration by that object. There's, that's the challenge. We have that challenge with hospital heliports today, because they're all private. So we've had to do that with private heliports in other places in the country, because the FAA has no authority unless it's a public use facility. Now, there are things you can do to prevent that. So in a lot of cases, I'll work with the zoning commission to actually draft an ordinance to protect airspace directly underneath those approach/departure paths, and then restrict height. The other one is to put in a easement, and that would require the two property owners to get together and draft an easement through their lawyers that would allow the individual to fly over that property, restrict the other individual from building above a certain height. The good, I think the easement's the best way, it's a harder one, but it's the best way, because politics are politics, and zoning commissions change, and you can change zoning. But an easement stays with the property, no matter who buys it.
Number one, on page five, you talk about night flights, and my understanding is there will be no like night flights, half an hour before and after. So would that completely come out of your, take it out of your report at all?
Well, the report was basically what would actually be required to do a night flight. So what we look at there is when is sunset, when is sunrise? And then the FAA goes on to, you know, quantify, when can you log night versus daytime? And then we go into evening nautical twilight, and FAA's got four different definitions for night. But if we were to fly nights, or need to have night operations, the heliport would have to have perimeter lighting, and the windsock would have to either be lit externally or internally. That was, that was the primaries that I brought out, if nights were considered. If not, those aren't required.
Okay. I was born and raised in Scott County, and I know that there's an airport at Lydia. Matter of fact, we plowed the runway for him. There was a man used to shoot at the planes because he hated it so much. And that's the truth. Okay, now, I think the thing would be, and I hear this once in a while, about a laser being directed at a pilot. Have you ever had any experience with that happening? And what would, what would happen to the pilot if he was taking off or landing?
I've seen those incidences. I personally have not had any experience with a laser in the civilian world. I have had experience with lasers in the military world, where you actually wore protective glasses specifically for that purpose. Now, in the aviation world, if you were to get shined with a laser, it can cause momentary blindness, it can cause permanent eye damage at the same time. It's a federal offense if you do it. We've been very good at tracking people down in that space. Now, with the advent of every aircraft having a, what's referred to as ADS-B tracking system, so as soon as the incident occurs, we can tell exactly where the aircraft was, where the individual was with a laser, we can track them down very quickly now. For the pilot, it's scary. I mean, there's been several law enforcement individuals, several military individuals who have had permanent eye damage from it. I wish I could say I could prevent that. Now, there are, there are apparatuses, like I said, safety glasses that you can invest in, that a lot of pilots do wear, for that specific purpose. in that a lot of pilots do wear for that specific purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Alexander at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Right to Mr. Schmidt at this point.
Thank you. So the only thing I really wanted to wrap up with here is, based on the supplemental information that staff has received, staff is recommending approval of the, of the heliport. We did have a draft of conditions, had 15 conditions included in it. We did look at modifications to a couple of those conditions based on new information that we've learned since the planning report was done. Condition 12, we, we did, we do feel it's appropriate to modify that condition. This isn't a DNR responsibility and there was guidance in the Eagle Act and we feel it's appropriate to change condition 12 to ensure compliance with the Eagle Act. The applicant shall avoid operation, avoid operating the helicopter within 1,000 feet of the eagle's nest during breeding season. So we feel that's appropriate change to that condition. Also, the applicant brought up a concern with condition 15, which deals with impacts to livestock. He was fine with the condition, he just wanted to make sure he wouldn't be responsible if livestock happened to be injured or property happened to be damaged from somebody else flying in the area. If he wasn't flying on that particular day, he shouldn't be responsible for those, for those impacts. So we put a little bit more definition into that condition. So it speaks to the applicant's helicopter creating those, those instances. So those are the two changes that staff is recommending to the conditions. I know the applicant has other modifications that they would like to see to the conditions. My suggestion was, I don't want to get into a lot of that at this point. We can have those discussions at this meeting if he, if he wants to look at additional modifications.
Mr. Chairman, Marty, I think we have to have some conversation about the conditions because I think a lot of them need to be amended. And to just shove them to the side and move on and table them and address them later, I think would be a real mistake. And I'll go through a couple of them with you, if you don't mind. You've got down that number two, the conditional use permit, and this is if we, if we go ahead and go forward with this conditional use permit, that it's going to be annually reviewed by the township. And I have a lot of trouble with that. The township didn't want to have anything to do with this. Why would we then put them in a position of authority to, to review, review this? I think if it's going to be reviewed later, it needs to be reviewed by Scott County, Scott County Planning and not the township. They wash their hands of it. So to put it back on them seems to me to be a little bit ridiculous. Number five, if the property is sold, the new owner shall contact Scott County Planning to review the conditions of the conditional use permit. This is such a contentious issue for everybody. I'd love to see if, a condition on this, that if the property is sold, the conditional use permit is discontinued. Why just grandfather it into someone who hasn't done perhaps all of the due diligence and spent all the money and done all the time that this applicant has done? I think that would be pretty irresponsible. Sorry, I'm on a roll, do you mind?
No, continue.
I can respond to you to an individual or wait till you're done?
You can wait, Marty. Well, if you want to respond to what I've done already...
Okay, with condition two, this is a common condition that's in virtually all of our conditional use permits, that the township has the ability to review those on an annual basis. Whether those townships decide to do that today, next week, five years from now, this condition would stay in there and allow them that opportunity. If this board felt that additional review needed to be done, possibly by planning commission or by county staff, we could put language like that in there also.
Marty, that's exactly why I don't like it, okay? Because I think there needs to be some oversight and I don't think it's going to be provided at the township level. And I think at the Scott County Planning Board level, we are certainly learning a lot about this process and that we are the ones that should be reviewing it. And so I want, I want it, I want to strike the reference to the township board and move it into our bailiwick. No, I'm sure you're going to be real thrilled, still getting a whole bunch of letters and calls and everything, Marty, but I do think that's where it belongs. That, and that's my opinion.
We have had other conditional use permits where we have had like a one-year review by the planning commission of, of that permit, but then they would decide if they wanted to continue to have annual reviews or not. It does start to fill up your agenda, but it, it's totally up to you folks as to whether you want to recommend it.
Maybe I should finish then because I have a couple more things that might fly back into that.
Donna, if I could just say something?
Yeah.
Town boards are elected, so they can be changing and, and there again, you might have a whole new board that might have a whole new train of thought on that where we're not elected. So I think maybe it should stay in just because this particular town board kind of washes their hands of it. The next board might not.
But I think this is so critical and so important and it's such a contentious issue that the township board that we have now has washed their hands of it. And that's what we're dealing with today.
But it could still come back to us too.
Could is not, is not good enough for me. Coulda, woulda is not good enough here.
Commissioner Herman.
Mr. Chair, Donna, I understand what you're saying and I'm not disagreeing and I understand what you're saying, I'm not disagreeing. If the, if there's any representatives here from the Cedar Lake Township Board, I'd like to hear them make the statement if they're going to wash their hands before we go any further with the county staff.
I didn't mean that to be derogatory like that. I read their recommendation and they passed on it and they said they weren't going to make a, they, they threw it to us. So that's why I have trouble throwing it back to them. They didn't want it in the first place.
They've washed their hands on zoning issues, but at the same time, they do have their responsibility to the residents of Cedar Lake Township to address their, their daily duties, so.
Then if we do it, we, we put some more meat in this and we get a lot more specific because I think it's an important point that...
Well, and we could go to Marty's suggestion of, of adding another sentence that would enable the planning commission to have it come back before the planning commission annually.
Yeah, and, and maybe we're jumping ahead a little bit. We've got a lot of comments still that want to...
Okay, but I do, speak to one more, just one more. And it is number 15 because we heard an awful lot here about takeoffs and landings and we haven't right now addressed much time about the aircraft flying over different properties. And when I visited the site, there is a residential area that we're, we've been speaking about. But beyond that, if you go in a circle and widening circles outside of this, there is small farm after small farm after small farm after small farm down that road. And I must have counted 150 horses out on the road down there. And, and while I will certainly bow to the experts on helicopters, I would feel very comfortable holding myself out as an expert on equines since I've been breeding them for 30 years. And I've never been able to explain a helicopter to a horse. They are flight animals and they are terrified. I got on a first-name basis 30 years ago with Scott County mosquito control when they flew over my farm and didn't realize we had horses out for the first time. And the three-year-old foal, three-month-old foal that had to be put down after that flight was pretty destroying to them and to me. And since then, they have been wonderful. They call me for 30 years before they spray in our area and guess what? I leave my horses in the barn so that nobody gets hurt. And they do that for a lot of other horse owners. And the reason is because they know that flying a helicopter over a field of horses is asking for trouble. Those horses go crazy, they don't know where they're going, they run into walls, they run into fences, and if you're out there, they run over you. So the statement here about the applicant will meet with the livestock owner and mitigate the disruptions, that falls way short of anything that I could be comfortable with. I mean, if, if there is an accident, it's going to get mitigated, but it'll probably get mitigated by the lawyers that whoever had, whoever was damaged will hire to go after it. And I have some real concerns about helicopters flying over livestock on a regular basis because those livestock operations are really, really close to this residential area. So I think we really need to take a long look at number 15, Marty.
Well, and I'm not an expert on livestock and I'm not an expert on helicopters, so if Rex or somebody else wanted to speak to, speak to the impact of livestock by helicopters, I'd open, open the mic to you.
No, she brings up a very good point. I mean, the last thing you want to do is introduce a large vehicle, creating wind and noise and a shadow on an animal. Now, you said that it was a mosquito operation.
And I know you're going to tell me they were flying really low. They actually were just going over, but as I said, I'm not trying to be difficult here.
No, no, I totally understand.
But horses are flight animals. Cows are even worse because a horse weighs an average of 1,000 pounds. A cow can go 2,000 to 3,000 pounds and they go through fences. Horses just hurt themselves. And I've got some concerns about all of a sudden you introduce a helicopter, even though it's one person in a private operation, but boy, those farms are awfully close to this residential area. And there were, I saw so much livestock, I couldn't believe it when I was driving around. And I don't know who we mailed to, Marty, to ask about this meeting, but I'll bet we didn't get to all those farmers. I'm just, you know, this is...
Well, I provided you with some of the data that has been created by both the US military on animals. I've got other data that has been done on animals, both horses, all livestock, hogs, cows, chickens, all of them are susceptible if exposed to a low-flying aircraft. Now, based on the distances we're talking about, being that it's at 500 feet and above to most of those areas, and in most cases, he's going to probably be at 1,000 feet. So I would look at what aircraft do you have flying in the neighborhood today over that area and has there been any incidents? What we can do is, I can, I can get with the FAA and look at what aircraft have flown through this area, what altitude over the last three months, and then compare those altitudes and say, have there been an incident because of those aircraft?
The only trouble I have with that is most farmers are not going to report an incident if they lose a cow or they lose a horse. They just eat it because that's farming. That was a hazard of farming. And the fact of the matter is that if they lose an animal, it's an infrequent thing. A helicopter happened to go over. I worry about how often.
No, no, I understand. Well, having grown up and was raised on a farm, I know we've slaughtered our fair share of heifers that slipped and fell and broke a hip on slippery area. And yeah, I've seen animals get scared of some of the strangest stuff. As a helicopter pilot, I've landed near many farm, on many a farm, both in the military and as an EMS helicopter pilot. And in my experience, as long as you're careful of how close you are, the biggest thing you don't want to do to any animal, be it a mammal on land or also a mammal in the ocean, is put your shadow over that animal at close range. That is the one thing that I have experienced personally, to disorient them the most. But yeah, we do have some additional information that we could provide if that would help. I don't have any experts on hand like I do for the bird piece, so...
Well, unfortunately for everybody here, I consider myself an expert on equine behavior and that type of thing. I have 30 years of breeding horses, hasn't made me an expert on how they behave, then I've, I don't know what it would take.
I would say, I would look at the airspace and look at the altitudes and then look and see what are in that area. And we can, we can work out what that would look like because the aircraft's not going to be coming in at low altitude, it's going to be coming in above 500 feet, above ground level. So...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do you want to make a statement?
Would you mind if I talked to this a little bit?
No, no, that's fine. You addressed that.
Yeah, I understand. I'm definitely an animal lover myself. Like I said, I have a cattle ranch in Nebraska. I've flown in and out of there more than a dozen times. The first few times we went down there, I myself wanted to see how the cattle, how the horses would react. And when I landed next to a horse, I'm not saying your horses didn't get spooked, I'm just talking about my own experience. The horse looked at me and went right back to grazing. The cattle that I landed next to never even raised their heads. Now, I'm not saying that some animals are not more skittish than others, but I do want you to know that I would be extremely respectful of all the animals in the area. And I don't think it would take very long. You know, Rex would have to work this up and figure it out, but right now, the EMS helicopter pilot that typically flies out of New Prague, they fly over our land quite often. I would say at least every two weeks, I don't know. I hear them quite often. And they're typically flying, I'm guessing, around 500 feet up. And I don't believe we have any issues currently with that helicopter, with animals. I don't know. If there are, let me know, please. And then, like I said, when I was talking, we had over 100 low-flying aircraft, airplanes over our area within a one-week's timeframe. So if there's certain animals in certain locations, I would want to be mindful and do everything I can to work with you, work with that animal owner, to figure out at what elevation they feel someone is safe to fly over.
And let me just say this and then I won't belabor it.
Sure.
Okay? I, I'm very attuned to farmers that have to make a living and to people that have horses, all right? I do not have a tiny little farm. I, I own a nationally recognized Arabian breeding farm. Our stock is exported to Dubai, to Romania. The last five horses I bred have all been exported. These are big buck horses. And if you fly, and right now, I don't have to worry about a helicopter flying over and putting one of them into a fence. I understand you want to do what you want to do, but I've been here 30 years raising these animals and I, that's my, my livelihood. And to add a factor out here where somebody could just fly over is very, very concerning to me. I understand you want to do what you want to do, but there are, are airports that you already have your helicopter at that are not going to endanger my stock and my ability to make a living. And I'm also concerned for the small farmers that have one or two family animals and have a kid in the yard when a helicopter goes over and a horse loses its mind and runs the kids down. Horses are not smart, okay? They, and they get scared and their brains go right out their back ends. And I, I want to be respectful. I really think you're doing everything you can do to make it as safe as it can be, but I don't know why somebody that wants to do something they want to do takes precedent over people that have been in the county paying their taxes and paying their dues for the last 30 years without having to put up with that. And I won't belabor it anymore. I don't want to have a horse debate.
Do I got something? No, not, not yet. There'll be time for more input from everyone, so that time is coming.
Okay. Can I read one comment from a cattle rancher that I work with?
Sure.
Okay. And, yeah. My name is Ty Breithoff and I am a cattle rancher in Knox County, Nebraska. I also have a college degree in agriculture. My property is across the road from Doug Schiefer's property. Doug has flown in and out of here several times. In fact, he trained out of here for a week straight, in and out multiple times, landed and taken off next to cattle, horses, dogs, cats, rabbits, chickens, et cetera, with almost zero reaction out of the animals. When I say almost, I mean that cattle never even raised their heads from grazing, but my horse, being within 130 yards from where Doug landed and took off again a few minutes later, was grazing, lifted her head to look at the helicopter for a second and went back to grazing. As one of the larger cattle ranchers in Knox County, Nebraska, having witnessed Doug's helicopter multiple times, landing and taking off in pastures next to my animals and close to his own animals, I have zero concern whatsoever. Please note that animals in today's world are accustomed to hearing farm equipment, semis, jake brakes, and every type, every ATV type known to man on any given day. End quote.
And I, I appreciate that. I'm glad that he feels safe in Nebraska.
Right, but at what elevation? You know, a person in aviation can fly and do fly quite often. I see aircraft all the time, low-flying aircraft. So I think the question here would be, at what elevation is a aircraft flying at which potential harm could be done?
That's not the question. The question is...
But people are flying anywhere they want.
People fly all the time. The question is, do we want in, in our township... People fly all the time. The question is, do we want in, in, in our township to allow someone to fly often and, and, you know, we have a quiet rural environment. I know you want to do what you want to do. You want to do it because it's going to make your family feel better and you're going to be close. But you know what? I don't want you to do it. I don't want you to do it because I don't want to hear it. I don't want to have it endanger my animals. And we're all entitled to our own opinions. And I think that's probably what it's going to come down to. And I want to be respectful. I think if there was ever, you know, do I think you're a good pilot? Yeah. Do I think you spent a lot of money? I'll give you that. Do I think that the helipad is going to meet all the requirements? I'll give you that, too. The question for me is, does it need to be there?
If I can't have it there, I wouldn't fly.
No, please, don't.
I really wouldn't.
It's not going to, we don't want this to go into just a discussion between you two.
Yeah, well, I'll stop.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to
Consider me silenced.
Marty, you want to come up and finish here on this, your presentation, so we can
No, I'm pretty much done, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, with my presentation at this point. I think there's a lot of people here that have been waiting a long time to make some comments, so.
We can, we can come back to the conditions
Absolutely.
As you suggested, as
Because they may have some suggestions as well.
Yes. All right. Very good. Please start your comments with your name, and make sure that you sign in at the podium up there.
Did you guys formally open up the chair? I'm actually, I'm, you're attorney?
This is still part of the applicant's presentation, is my understanding.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Kyle Hart. I'm an attorney representing Doug Schiefer. I will be brief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hart.
But I believe it's very important that you understand a couple of points. The first point that I want to make is for you to trust your staff. Marty Schmitz, Brad Davies, and others have spent countless hours over many months researching the issues based on Mr. Schiefer's application, fielding inquiries from the public, meeting with constituents, and making the very best recommendation that they could when they recommended approval of the CUP for Mr. Schiefer's heliport. So you need to trust your staff. The second point that I'd like to make, that as planning advisory commission members, you are legally required to base your decision on the objective facts and evidence. Arguments based on speculation, inaccurate information, and fear must not enter into your decision. There's a Minnesota Court of Appeals case that originated right here in Scott County. It's called Scott County Lumber versus the City of Shakopee. It was decided by the Minnesota Court of Appeals in 1988, and it specifically states, and I quote, "Community opposition to a landowner's desire to use his property for a particular purpose is not a legally sufficient reason for denying a conditional use permit. The denial must be based on something concrete." End quote. In other words, fear that is not based on factual evidence or bias against helicopters does not cut it. To prevent an owner of property from the free use and enjoyment of their property, you need concrete proof of real significant adverse impacts to neighboring properties that is, and this is the important point, that is not otherwise allowed under the zoning laws. In the staff report at page five, the staff addresses this point directly, when they point out that property owners in rural areas, RR1 zoning district, have a right to pursue many land use activities that some residents might view negatively, including, and they give a list, operating feedlots, 250-plus animals in a feedlot. That's permitted under the RR1 zoning ordinance. Installing solar gardens, solar panels all over acres and acres of land, specifically allowed. Other people might object, but it's allowed. Mining is allowed. Constructing cell towers is allowed. Constructing commercial wind turbines is allowed. Operating public kennels, you can have up to 25 dogs boarded in a RR1 zoning ordinance. A lot of people would say, I don't want that as my neighbor. I don't like it. It's going to interfere with my ability to make a living or do whatever. But it's specifically allowed under the zoning ordinances in Scott County. Operating shooting ranges. A lot of people go crazy with guns. It's specifically allowed. Operating motocross tracks, it's specifically allowed, even though other people are going to object. It's allowed. And yes, constructing and operating heliports, subject to a conditional use permit, is specifically allowed in RR1, subject to a conditional use permit. So you can't just say, I don't want this. You know, it'll interfere with my horses or whatever. It is allowed. That's the purpose of zoning ordinances.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Commissioner, answer us.
Why does this board exist?
Excuse me?
Why does this board exist? If it's allowed, there's no reason for us to be here.
No, no, there's, you can have, put conditions on it, subject to
That's what we're trying to do.
I know, but with all due respect, you seem to be saying you don't want them no matter what.
No, I am, you're, you're standing up here and saying, if it's allowed, it's allowed.
No.
It's allowed if this board approves the conditional use permit. And I have always thought that we bring a lot to the table, not just with respect to the laws, but with common sense and with a sense of honor and dignity and fairness. I hope that all matters in today's world.
I'm sure it does, but also the free use of your property also matters. And so you have, you have a tension here. But all I'm pointing out is, is just because somebody says, I don't like this use, that's not the way it works. That may work in a RR1C or some other zoning district, but not in RR1. These things are specifically allowed, subject to conditional use permits. So that's all, that's what we're talking about now. Not whether you can do it or you can't. It's under what conditions can you do it? So as the staff points out, it's not enough that residents don't like the land use that a property owner desires to undertake with his own private property. There has to be a very significant and objective basis, a factual basis, before the county can deprive a property owner from the free use and enjoyment of their property. And I don't think that's been proven here today. What you have are unsupported allegations. I, I recognize that you may think that you're an expert on horses. We have other people who say different. We have people who say you can land next to a horse or a cow and it has no effect on them whatsoever. So I don't think that's as positive of this issue at all. In this case, what we have is largely unsupported allegations. One such allegation is that Mr. Schiefer's helicopter is likely to crash. And that's despite the irrefutable evidence that the odds of a crash at a heliport with 400 annual operations is one accident every 495 years. He's not going to have 400 operations, you know, a year. It's going to be way less than that. You're talking one out of 1,000 years by the time you're done with this. You know, the odds of dying in a pool are way worse than that. And yet, we don't ban pools. And you shouldn't ban heliports either. The naysayers have similarly made unsupported allegations about sound when the objective evidence is to the contrary. Mr. Schiefer's helicopter noise is similar to a lawnmower. It's, it's right in the statistics that you have in front of you. Similar to a lawnmower or a chainsaw, and it lasts for a far shorter duration. This fact is demonstrated by your staff statement. It's at page four of the staff report, and it says, and I quote, "The Scott County Environmental Health Department has reviewed the proposal and concurs with the applicant's assessment that the heliport will not exceed state noise standards." Period. That's a quote from your staff about what your Scott County Environmental Health Department has reviewed and decided. Noise is not an issue here. Rob Mason, who was the city administrator up at East Gull Lake, said the same thing. We presented you with a letter from him in which he said, "Sound was not the issue." And he passed it on to Mr. Schmitz and said, "Share it with all of you." The reason they didn't agree to have the zoning ordinances changed up there, which is totally different from here, this is a loud use, subject to a conditional use permit down here. Up there, it wasn't, it had nothing to do with sound. They had witnesses who had the helicopter land up there, and they sat there for city, you know, planning and zoning people and city council member watched it and said, "No, sound is not an issue." Some of the other, there's a bunch of, I mean, literally goofy allegations that have been made by the naysayers here. They talk about rotary backwash. It has, you know, it's very, very limited backwash. It has no chance of affecting anybody in the neighborhood, you know, and is just certainly not a basis for rejecting anything. Another allegation has to do with eagles, despite the fact that Mr. Schiefer has agreed to fully comply with the US Fish and Wildlife Guidelines for Compliance with the Eagle Act. You know, one eagle has been hit in Minnesota in the history of avionics. It, it just isn't a basis. And I could go on and on, but we've already been here a long time, and I'm not going to. The bottom line is that after considering all of the objective evidence and the proven facts, I, I, I don't see this as being a close call. Your staff has recommended approval of conditional use permit. There are no facts, objective facts, other than people's opinions about how things look, that demonstrate that this helicopter will be any problem for anyone or any animal or anything. And there's no factual basis under the law or the Scott County zoning ordinance that denied Mr. Schiefer's application for a CUP. And we would request that you vote to approve the application with the conditions, which we still need to discuss about a little bit, but more or less, we're, we're on the same page with the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. May I remind you that we haven't taken any public testimony yet? So, thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it. All we've heard from is the applicant and the staff report at this point in the hearing. And now we are, if that is the completion of the applicant's report, or applicant's statements and the staff report, this is a public hearing. And this is the opportunity for the public to come forward and make their comments. I would ask that you, so we give everyone an opportunity who wishes to speak this evening, that you keep your comments direct and to the point. When you come up to the podium, there's a sign-in sheet. Please sign in and start with your name, and, and we'll go from there. So whoever would like to start, this is a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, while we're waiting, I was just curious if there's any of the three Cedar Lake Township supervisors here.
Oh, thank you for that update.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Lovin. I'm actually also an attorney, and I'm here on behalf of property owners that reside in Cedar Lake Township that asked me to come here tonight, review the application, review the staff report, and present what I think is my opinion on this situation. You may or may not recognize my, my name. I was actually the attorney that represented a group of property owners up in East Gull Lake. And so I'm familiar with the applicant. I'm familiar with these individuals, you know, appreciated all the points that they made, and I'm glad that I have an opportunity, I guess, to make some of my points. In this instance, here in Scott County, Mr. Hart was absolutely right, that there is already a reference to heliports as a conditional use in the RR1 lots in Scott County. That's very true. However, kind of researching this and having had an opportunity to speak with some people in zoning, such as Marty, right? Nice to meet you, Matt, by the way. I understand that this is the first time that anyone has actually applied for a private heliport on a residential lot in Scott County. Is that right?
Yes.
That this has never actually been considered until this application. And so I'm not here to tell you that, you know, what Kyle said about, you know, this being something that's already in your code. That's absolutely true. However, this is the first time it's ever been discussed. This is the first time conditions have ever been considered as to what would be appropriate, wouldn't be for operating a private heliport. And so, really, what I'm telling you guys is, take the time here to set a good precedent, because this is what's going to establish private heliport use in Scott County going forward for who knows how long. As you guys are probably aware, you just have some general rules in your zoning ordinance, like you would find in most ordinances, that kind of talk about what your purpose is, what you're here to do, and primarily, first and foremost, you're here to protect public health, safety, and the general welfare of the people that live in your county. That is your number one objective as the Planning and Zoning Board. You're also here to preserve the natural environment of the county. You're here to protect the historic and aesthetic resources of the county. These are your goals and objectives. And you're also here to implement the comprehensive plan of Scott County. So these are all things that you should be thinking about, all things that should come into play, especially when we're talking about a, an issue of first impression, such as private heliports and residential lots. Just looking at this particular application, I, I just flagged what I consider four issues that I think are surrounding this application. This is based on information primarily put together by your staff, and I'm just going to run through them real quickly. There is the MPCA sound standards, and this is something that was brought up by the applicant's expert, that there is a Minnesota rule out there that dictates sound standards. I think, you know, he went so far as to say, this is, it's very important that we get this data right in terms of these sound standards, because we need to be compliant with state laws. Based on what I know, the information on the MPCA sound standards and whether or not this use would meet that, it was from one source. It was from the applicant's source. But from what I understand, we have no independent studies or independent reviews or discussions about whether or not this is actually the case. And, you know, speaking with my clients, I'm like, well, wouldn't it be nice to have an independent, you know, sound study actually done where someone could come down here, they could actually, you know, look into the, you know, the Bell 206 L4 helicopter and make an independent determination as to whether or not these sound standards are actually going to be met at this site with this use. I understand that some of my clients have sent some additional information to the MPCA about this particular helicopter. I understand they're considering it. And so I saw this as what I consider to be a big issue. We should maybe wait until we can hear from the MPCA and they can give us more direction on whether or not these standards are actually going to be met. Because from what I know, the only information that was provided was information that was generated by the applicant. And I'm not saying it's inaccurate or anything like that. I'm just saying it's not really independent. It, you know, maybe isn't delving as deeply as maybe some other property owners in Cedar Lake Township would like it to. Another issue that I sort of flagged, this was actually pointed out to me by some of the clients, but in the comprehensive plan in Scott County, there's actually a section that deals with aviation. And underneath that section, there's specifically a reference to heliports that sort of suggests that they understand that private heliports don't exist yet. But if and when they do, there should be rules and guidelines already established before conditions are put onto any particular use. And from what we could tell, there haven't had, or there haven't been any discussions, and certainly there haven't been any rules or guidelines yet established, about what would be appropriate for private heliports to be operating on residential lots in Scott County. And so, again, I just see this as something that should be considered, should be established before we decide whether or not to start handing out CUP permits. This is something in your comprehensive plan. The next issue that I see, it's this split zoning, dual zoning question that's coming up, where we have a property that's in the RR1C, which is essentially a neighborhood. It's the Wild Woods Ponds. That's where the principal structure is, of which this heliport's going to be an accessory use. However, that heliport is going to be placed on the RR1 property that's directly adjacent to this cluster development, this neighborhood. I understand Marty spoke about how split zoning is not unheard of in Scott County, that it's odd, it's strange. However, it does occur in certain situations. And I'm thinking, well, if it's so strange and it only occurs in certain situations, I, I don't think the purpose of giving someone a split zoning right is to allow them to have some sort of use and benefit that's, you know, greater than what the use and benefit of their principal resident, or principal structure is. So in this case, the principal structure is located in RR1C. If you're going to apply zoning rules in this case, I think you would look to the RR1Z, see zoning classifications when determining whether or not a conditional use permit for an RR1 use is appropriate. That's, I think, something that should be thought. Finally, the conditions. And, you know, I, I think this has been touched on by the applicant's group, the expert, the attorney. It's certainly been touched on by people up there on the commission. But I don't think these have really been thoroughly thought through and vetted. There are clearly still a lot of issues, still a clear lot of, or clearly a lot of concerns. I, I read through those proposed conditions. I don't see I read through those proposed conditions, I don't see any condition that restricts landing or takeoff in particular weather conditions. I don't see anything that is talking about requirements for security in terms of fencing or anything like that on perimeter. I know that my clients have additional thoughts and concerns that they think should be added as conditions to this particular permit if and when it were ever approved. And so, you know, long story short, I think county staff, I think this zoning advisory committee, certainly the county commissioners, you know, I think they should take a little more time, maybe discuss with other local governments in Minnesota that have allowed this use, try to determine what the best practices are for if and when you're ever going to allow a private heliport on a residential lot. And, you know, use that time to figure out how do they want this to run in Scott County? Because again, this is the first time you've ever really considered this. So, in conclusion, my proposal, my recommendation is table this thing. I understand that you have, you know, the 1599 deadlines, but I don't think that runs until October, and then they could still do the 60-day extension if they wanted to, right? And push this back into, as late as December if they wanted to. You could use that time to talk to the MPCA. You could use that time to talk to other local governments that have allowed this use to determine what best practices are for permitting heliports on residential lots. You could use that time to just have a working session and really get into these conditions because clearly there are a lot of conditions, or a lot of concerns and questions that are hanging out there. You know, this application, it appears particularly contentious and, you know, I really didn't realize it until I got involved about a week ago, but there just seems to be a lot less sorted, to sort out. And I think tabling a decision for now, taking more time to really delve into this and figuring out what would appropriate conditions be? And would this particular application meet those conditions? And take a little more time to figure this out because it is a case of first impression. And so, you have the time, you can take the time, take it, figure it out. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jim Britton. I'm one of the people that live in Wildwood Ponds. And two things. When you listen about noise, I did noise studies for 10 years for a company out of Racine, Wisconsin. I analyzed noise, figured out what was making the noise. If you look at the Minnesota law, it says you have to comply to 65 dB A. That's what the human ear hears, is the A scale. So if we're talking any noise levels, make sure it's on a dB A scale. That's what we hear. Now Doug, in his letter to the neighbor, said, "We are about 800 feet from his heliport." I will hear with my human ear, "I need noise levels of dB A." The second item is we are the first people that lost sale to our home last October because of the heliport issue. It's in the petitions, if you read through the petitions. I talked to Marty about it. We lost the sale when I told, and you have to tell him. That's the state law. My son is a Realtor up there two years ago. He said, "Dad, you gotta tell him about the heliport coming in." Soon as I told him that, they said, "We don't want to live by an airport. We want to live in a quiet area." So, that's my spiel. Thank you.
My name is Tracy, and I moved into the area, it was a year ago August. The first week that I lived in the house, I had a puppy. I still have him. But the first week, the helicopter flew over our house. I work from home full-time. I was on a customer call. I could not talk to my customer due to the fact that the helicopter was flying over. It echoed so bad between our houses, it freaked my dog out, and I had to cancel my call. I don't make the kind of money that he does. He works hard, but I don't want to lose a sale due to the fact that I have to worry about a helicopter flying over our house. We paid a lot of money for our dog for hunting. Now our dog is scared when helicopters fly over. The dog is a year old right now. We're finally working through it with our dog. Hopefully that, we'll be able to get through it. The other thing is, with the helicopter pad being put in, in the new location, what makes us think that he is not going to use the pad that already exists where it should not be? So, then, would he still be able to fly over our houses? The fact that you lost, the gentleman lost the sale to their house, that's another big issue of ours. Our house, I mean, it's our livelihood. The reason we purchased where we did was due to the fact of the resale. It's a beautiful location, love the area, love the neighbors, but what happens in a couple of years when we decide that we want to sell? Are we going to lose our butts? We don't want that to happen. We work hard for what we have, what little we have. And the fact that the helicopter pad was already existing, do you forgive and just move forward? Ask for forgiveness later? Go ahead and just do it. So if I want to put a shed in on my land and make a next, another easement to drive in, do I go ahead and do that? And then say, "Oh, I'm sorry. I went ahead and did it. Can you forgive me and let me leave it up there?" That is a couple of things that just concerns us as being new homeowners in that location. I'm all for everybody making their lives better. That, I mean, I certainly, I would love to make more money. I would love to be able to fly a helicopter or plane in and out. I would give anything for that, but that's not it. We have to think about our livelihoods in our neighborhoods. And if we have to say that when we sell our house, if we have to put it down, that there's a helicopter and we risk losing our house, or losing a sale on our house, that's going to hurt. Then why did we buy? And it's, I mean, I respect you, I do. You're in business, I get that. But I don't trust you. I don't know you, but I don't trust you. And just, please, just think about that. Put yourselves in our shoes if you don't live in our neighborhood. I don't want to lose my butt on my house. It's a beautiful house. I don't want to lose our butts on it, even if we can't sell it. That's all I really had to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't get her last name.
My last name is Hilfer.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yep.
What is her part?
Hilfer.
Silver.
Hilfer, H-I-L, F as in Frank, E-R.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Mike Bassett. I've actually known the Schiefer family for close to a decade now, I think, about that. Started out coaching soccer and getting to know Doug and whatnot. There's a lot of disparaging things being said about the family that I have a lot of problems with. He's one of the most respectful men I know. Family's super respectful. Kids are super respectful. I'm sorry to hear about your horse. When I spent time up on our Black Angus Ranch on Washington Island, we had the float helicopter land at the farm often because of Cap's Harbor was too windy to land it. Farm sat down in a wallow, little hollow, big pond, 50 cattle. No kidding, not even 150 feet away. They just watched. 250 feet away on the other side of the fence was 27 horses or 30 horses they had, not Arabians. I dated a girl that had Arabians way, way back. They're flighty, no question, but we never had a problem on the farm. So, I just wanted to say that, just say that, just because there's a few disgruntled neighbors shouldn't dictate something being passed or not. You know, as far as a helicopter moving in next door to me, I'd love it. And as far as the mosquito control goes, they lick the treetops above my house when they spray my ponds. They, they're close. My house shakes, and you could pretty much toss a water balloon up and hit the helicopter if they're so damn close to the house. So, I don't know the situation, and I'm sorry that happened to you, but like I said, a few disgruntled neighbors should not be able to dictate what a man is capable of that literally started from somewhere and reached a different level and wants to enjoy the different things in life that most of us can't. And I think a lot of what you're hearing today is jealousy, in my opinion. I'm nowhere near Mr. Schiefer's level, but I think a lot of it is jealousy. So.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Mike.
Hello, my name is David Karen. I happen to be an attorney, but I'm not here as an attorney tonight. I'm a neighboring landowner to the south and west, very close to the subject property you're looking at. I don't know the Schiefers at all. I have no personal opinion or any views on any of the, rather, some of the personal things going both ways. But I do have a couple of, a couple of comments. Mr. Schiefer indicated, "Hey, there's 15 neighbors in Wildwood in favor, five against." And if you look at the staff report, they said, "Boy, there's a lot in favor and a lot against." I don't know how many are in favor, but I know there's 95 petitions, which I assume have been delivered to you with 150 signatures on, so the neighbors, and that's within a half mile, I believe, those 90-some petitions, are not in favor of those 150 people. So, it's not kind of a close call to neighbors. I don't understand, I certainly respect your opinion on the Schiefer family. I don't know how anybody could say, "I really would like to have a helicopter next door." I understand your, your job is not that simple, that whether, you know, you'd like to have it or not have it, but I don't, don't quite understand that. There's a number of things in the conditions I just don't understand also. It says it's going to be limited to applicants' personal use. What does that mean? Does that mean that Mr. Schiefer will be the only passenger on the helicopter? Does that mean that he's going to be the only pilot on the helicopter? I, I just don't know what that means when it's limited to his personal use. Says we're no hovering at low altitudes. Again, I don't know what that means. What's low altitudes? And if there's no hovering, shouldn't there be no passing over at some altitude? I mean, it shouldn't be buzzed by the helicopter. I'm not suggesting Mr. Schiefer would do that, but there should be some condition that would prohibit that. And what's a low altitude? I see in the conditions, it says daylight hours, but we had a presentation from the consultant talking about nightlights and windsocks, and this is maybe if something in the future you want to do. And I'm saying, "Wait a second, I mean, aren't you, which is it? Is it daylight hours? Or is it daylight and nighttime too? Is it something to be reconsidered later on?" It just, again, you can't quite figure it out. Even on number 15, which was, or, sorry, it may not have been 15, on the eagle question, where it was amended to comply not flying within 1,000 feet during the breeding season. Well, does that mean that the south approach and landing has been eliminated, the proposed approach? Because the heliport may be 1,000 feet, though actually, I'm not at all sure that's correct, but the heliport may be 1,000 feet from the eagle's nest, but if you take the southern flight takeoff, you are going to be within 1,000 feet. I know that for sure if you go south. So you might start out 1,250 feet, I think, what Mr. Alexander said, but you're going to get within 1,000 feet. So I also don't know the answer to that. There may be ways to deal with that, but it's sure not apparent to me, and I wouldn't think it'd be apparent to you from what's presented so far. I think Mr. Lovin, when he was speaking, said, "This needs more study. This needs, this needs some time for people to look at it." I, you know, I, I just myself would have a lot of questions. I can't imagine that you don't. And if this is the first application for a CUP for a private heliport, you do want to get it right. I mean, I know you do, and so I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Dave?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Commissioner. You had touched on that petition and all the people that signed it. I was waiting tonight to, I have some questions on that, and I was waiting to see if this Lauren was going to be talking tonight.
I'm sure he is. He's in the room.
And then, but if he wasn't here, then I was going to ask you about it. So I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I didn't want to interrupt you, sir, but I just wanted to touch on what you said earlier, my comment.
Let's go, we'll come back to you, but I want to give everybody an opportunity before we come back to second time around. All right?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Dohmeyer, and I reside at 4215 Hunter's Lane. So we're one of the homes on the Hunter Crest subdivision. We're in the cul-de-sac. And so, in the interest of time and allowing more people to speak, I am speaking on behalf of my husband, Steve, and our neighbors, Stephen Sue, who reside at 4205 Hunter's Lane. I did want to point out, the petition has been talked about, seven out of nine homeowners did sign that on our street. So, and we're very close to the applicant's address. I don't know the applicant either, so just going, making my comments based upon our personal It is our understanding that staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with some conditions, and I would like you to specifically look at some of those conditions. One of them is the north flight plan goes directly over our house, our neighborhood. I would like you to eliminate that flight plan so that it is less of a, no matter what anybody says, it's noisy. So I would like that to be considered. The other thing is, the staff report says something about 84 operations. The letter from the applicant said he was only doing 50 per year, so we'd like to see that reduced. And then, the condition, I believe it's number eight, that spoke about sunrise to sunset. Who determines what that is and what time of the year? Because the summer solstice this year was at 5:23 in the morning, the latest sunset was 9:30 at night. Last summer, when he flew his helicopter over our house, it was done as late as 9:00 at night, sometimes later, and so that was very disruptive to our home life. A little backstory for us, we built our first home in Newmarket in 2001 behind St. Nicholas Church. We knew that Elko Speedway was across the road, and we're like, "Oh, we like racing. We'll go to the races, this'll be great." We were wrong. It's loud, it was every weekend, there was fireworks, it was disruptive, you're out on the deck. It was loud, but you know what? We made that choice to live next to the Speedway. I would never ask the Speedway to shut down, they were there first. It was our choice. Fast forward to 2005, and we find this great lot out in Cedar Lake Township. It was a good price, it was still in the same school district that our son was attending, green space, beautiful trees, a great opportunity for us, some wonderful neighbors, but most of all, it was quiet, right? That's what you expect in a rural area, that it's going to be quiet. But most of all, it was quiet, right? That's what you expect in a rural area, that it's going to be quiet, and you can enjoy the land that you have. In his letter to some of the residents, he stated he wanted this helicopter for work purposes. So if it is for work purposes, when you look at the takeoff, or I'm sorry, his flight patterns, and when he wants to use the helicopter, I suggest that you limit those hours between, I don't know, eight AM and six PM, and that maybe no weekends if it's for work. Again, that's just my opinion on it, because most of us, again, he has a different job than I do, but I work Monday to Friday. So, I want to enjoy my weekends in the peace and quiet. He also said, again, not more than fifty operations were needed. So I respectfully request that you look at changing that number from eighty-four to fifty. And, um, the applicant also said he wanted the helicopter pad at his house to allow more time with his family. He bought up, brings up great points. Spending time with your family is invaluable. So when we're sitting outside on our porch, or having family over, doing something fun outside, I don't want to be disrupted by helicopter noise either, because I am busy enjoying time with my family. And you know what? I don't know him. He appears to be a great guy. He appears to know what he's doing. He's got some experts that made some valid points. My concern is noise. I'll get right to it. The concern is noise. And you know what? He's got a big piece of property. We saw it. It's well lit. Those lights shine in the back of my house. I can put room darkening blinds on the backside of my house to mitigate the light that shines from his property. I can't do anything to mitigate the noise from the helicopter. I am counting on you guys to help us out. We have made an investment in our property, and I'm asking you to respect and consider our investments. Consider, we've been there fifteen years. It has been quiet. It was not quiet last summer when that helicopter flew over us. I'm just, I'm gonna say it. It was not quiet, and it's, we were there first. I get, he's maybe owned his property longer, but that helipad was there after the fact. We were there first. Please consider those of us that live in the Hunter's Crest subdivision when you make, um, any conditions related to this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'm Lauren Balls. I'm that dirty rotten scoundrel. I just wanted to, just a couple of housekeeping things on, things that were said earlier. Both Jim Britton and myself are devout Christians. We do not tell lies. We do not embellish the facts, as we were accused of earlier. The, the fact that, uh, the real estate disclosures, that's Minnesota State Statute eighty-two point six eight. You have to disclose pertinent facts about your property when you sell your property. There's a line item right on the real estate forms that's listed as aviation or heliports and, and, uh, aircraft. So that's, that's a rule, and I don't know why we're being told that we're lying, because we're telling people that. And I was accused of, uh, lying to Mr. Popoff about Doug only having ten acres of property. Mr. Popoff wasn't home when I went there. His wife signed the petition, so how did I lie to him? It doesn't make any sense. So enough arguing. There's a bunch of other things, uh, I'd like to set the record straight on, but my counsel has advised, advised me not to. Anyway, I did go out and canvass a lot of people, and, and we'll get back to the, the horse ranchers, the horse breeders. Everyone on, uh, Zimo Street has horses for the most part. Everyone signed the petition, couldn't wait. Even one donkey over in that neighborhood, so we gotta protect him also. Uh, Zachary Avenue, same thing. There's quite a few horse farmers, ranchers over there. County Road Two, they've all signed the petition. They don't want their horses affected. Another thing I'd like, uh, the Commissioner to really look at one more time is to read Mr. Brian Lubinski's letter to the county commissioners, and I think you all have a copy of that, because it was in the packet. But he stated that, um, the applicant flew his helicopter right, right behind his house when he was having a barbecue on his back porch. And Doug says, oh, I fly friendly. Well, that's not flying friendly. Also, last year, when Doug was forced by the county to remove his helicopter and take it down to Faribault, he immediately came back. Every time he flew, he came right back to our neighborhood and circled our neighborhood to just thumb down on us and say, yeah, I'm here. Look at me. Listen to my helicopter. Take it or leave it, Wildwood Pond's neighborhood. So, the other letter that I think you just received recently is from John Olson. He couldn't be here tonight, and he asked me to speak on his behalf. John is a U.S. Navy retired commander. He wrote a beautiful letter on safety, on helicopters, on neighborhoods. I, I would like you to just revisit that one more time, because it's, it's, it's a tremendous letter, and it, it really tells the whole story of what we're dealing with here. I've got, since this whole thing kind of went sideways tonight, I've got just a few slides that I'd like to present to the group, and then I'll turn things over to the next speaker.
Okay, just keep your time, be time cautious or sensitive.
It's not much, so I'll just.
Thank you.
I'll make it go. Mr. Lovin' talked about zoning ordinance number three, and that, uh, the CUP language asks that there be no deterrence to the neighbors or to the area. And we feel very strongly that this is a huge deterrence to our neighborhood. The same thing, there's a nuisance standard in, in our zoning code number three. And it's very explicit that, um, there must be a noise control plan. And I'm sure you've all reviewed that. And then the twenty forty plan also that, as, as Matt also said, needs to be, needs to address the creation of heliports in our community. There's no regulations. There's no guidelines. They need to be developed before we act on any CUP. Just, uh, a little bit on the demographics of our area. Again, it's, it's really rolling hills. They foster air, any air currents causing stability, instability to aircraft. We've got a lot of kids in our neighborhood. They need to stay safe and be protected. Uh, there's a very heavy cover of trees, and then of course, the, the abundance of wildlife we have in spades. There's probably no other place in Scott County that has more ducks, geese, blue herons, swans, sandhill cranes, egrets, turkeys. Uh, at one point, there were five hundred, uh, pelicans in one of our ponds. I mean, just a tremendous number, and they're a huge, um, nuisance, and they're also very dangerous to the aircraft operating in the area. Again, I talked about the, uh, horse boarding stables and private horse ranches. And, um, as Donna said, you know, we know of at least a hundred horses within, uh, just a one-mile radius of the heliport. And again, all those people do not want the heliport. We have, um, four U.S. Fish and Wildlife preserves directly in our neighborhood. This is protected land. My backyard, I can't touch it. I can't run the lawnmower in there. I can't cut a tree down. This is protected territory. And there's three of them in our immediate Wildwood Pond's neighborhood, and then there's another one down on eighty-six and twenty-three. So, uh, these areas are to be protected, the wildlife and the waterfall, and, and the helicopter's not consistent with that. We also have a DNR wetlands just to the northwest of the property. So again, it's just the worst possible place for a helicopter to be flying. And Porter Creek, tributary to the Minnesota River, runs right through Doug's property. And, uh, that needs to be protected also. And then, one of the bigger issues is the high voltage power lines. They're, they're sticking up in the air a long ways, and I've got a picture of them in my presentation. Super dangerous, super high voltage. I worked in the electrical industry for about forty years, and this stuff will reach out and kill you in an instant. Here's the power lines that are right adjacent to our neighborhood. I've started the picture of the, of the, uh, high voltage ones on the right, it's a little bit blurry, but that power line is three hundred and forty-five thousand volts, and it can carry all the electricity for, to serve one point eight million homes. That's like more of the capacity of the Monticello Nuclear Plant or the Prairie Island Nuclear Plant. That's how much power can run through these lines that runs right on County Road Two. And the ones, uh, Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative are thirteen thousand eight hundred volts. They run all the way down Panama, another huge danger, uh, to the, whoever flies the helicopter and to the, the public below if there's ever an accident. We had this case just this last year in Louisville Township, where a plane didn't see the power lines, flew right, right into them, and got hung up in the power lines. They, all the utility companies had to come and shut down all the power to the area. It's just a, uh, tremendous disaster. Birds and aircraft share the same space. We've talked about this quite a bit this, today. But I just wanted to quote, after the Black Hawk helicopter crash last year, on the news the very next day, uh, retired Army Colonel Jack Jacobson said in a statement, and he's a recipient of the Medal of Honor, one of the biggest threats to aircraft of all types, including helicopters, are birds. Particularly at this time of year, um, when birds are migrating, bird strikes are not uncommon. They threaten every aircraft in the air. And, um, just recently, uh, Mr. Schiefer made a comment to the Brainerd Dispatch, and it's in writing, and he said, even the smallest dent in my aircraft will cause it to become aerodynamically unstable. So, that kind of tells you that, you know, even a glancing blow from a, from a bird is, is very dangerous to, uh, aircraft travel. And, um, Donna brought up quite a bit about the, uh, the farmers in the area, both to the, um, south of the air, uh, proposed airport and, um, and to the east. Have a couple of, um, pictures of the eagles that, and they are bald eagles, and here they are. This is not something I took off the internet. These are the actual eagles in flight, both in the nest and soaring right in our neighborhood. They need to be protected. I came up with some other conclusions, a couple of pages, but basically, are we going to let one person's hobby, uh, compromise our entire neighborhood, the safety and security and peace of mind, reduce the ability to enjoy nature? The, at the end of the day, we're gonna see that this helicopter is over a hundred decibels when measured at a hundred feet. That's even on one of the charts that the applicant put, uh, into his, uh, filing of the application, that there's a helicopter that's a hundred DBA measured at a hundred feet. That in itself will trip that sixty-five DBA noise standard. And I don't imagine that Mr. Schiefer wants to do this, uh, investment in his pad and his hanger, all this stuff, to find out on the very first flight that it, uh, trips the MPC standards of sixty-five DBA. And so I think we need to investigate that, have a noise study done in advance, and not go off half-cocked here. That's about all I have for tonight. Is there any questions from anyone?
I think I have one question from.
Yeah, Lauren, um, the five, the seven of us board members, the five here and the two downstairs who are, were volunteers.
Yes.
We've been on the board together for several years. We all bring something to the table. And we all learn, sometimes we learn, um, every month on some new situation like this. This is a learning experience, so we have to do a lot of research. And what we look for is the truth. And, um, and now, let's just set this, uh, aside for a second. I want to talk about the petition that went around. Now, you and Jim must have handled, um, the recruiting of the opposition.
There was probably five or six people who were signing that.
So the questions I have, was there like, I, I haven't seen anything in writing on what you said to these people?
We had them read, read the petition, so we, we, again, we did not embellish on anything that wasn't relative or anything that wasn't true.
But you had four or five people to recruit, um, for this, uh, petition. So different things were probably said to different people, and.
Could be.
Could be. So there was no, like, a standard truthful, let's say, let's say, a, a statement that they could have in writing and see what was said. The reason I bring that up is when this letter came in from someone that had previously signed the petition, and then here is over fifty letters of support, and someone in there mentioned the same thing. I'm not accusing you of this. I'm just telling you, to me, it's kind of flawed, and it throws up a red flag for me, when they make statements that they were deceived. Um, it made it sound like he'd be flying in and out multiple times a day, overstated the danger to the homes in the area, left out about the number of times of flights and volumes of flights, stated the helicopter owner had ten acres for a helipad, and since then has learned they have more. Well, where did they get this information? So when I read this, and I don't, I didn't see any petition on what was provided to all these people, it kind of loses a little credibility. You know what I'm saying? And, and I'm not saying right now whether I'm for or against this project. I'm just talking strictly about this, uh, this, um, petition. That's what I'm talking about, the petition.
I think we were forthright. We had the people read the petition. I do not think we embellished on anything, uh, never said ten acres to a soul. I know that Doug has forty acres. I've studied this thing for the last two years, so there's no reason that I would say that. You have a, a letter from the Lovelots. They were the most critical people who opposed the heliport. They had two horses. They both have since died. They have ponds. They have wildlife. Mrs. Lovett could not thank me enough for all the work that I did on behalf of the neighborhood. Lauren, you and Jim are just our saviors. Thank you, thank you. She said thank you like thirteen times in a row. But when Doug went and talked to her and offered them a couple hundred thousand dollars for their thirteen acres, then, all of a sudden, Lauren lied to us. Jim said this, some said that. It, I think it's pretty simple there. Money talks and bullshit walks and.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Petitions are always difficult, I think, in any, in any setting. I'd hate to throw out the ninety-seven signatures that are on there, because one person changed their mind. Okay, so I, I'll take that with a grain of salt. We also saw a petition, uh, from, uh, Mr. Schiford, that if you, if you went through that, there were lots of names on there, but there were an awful lot of them that weren't even in our state. So I think i- if you start picking them apart on a single answer, then we shouldn't look at any of them. I think we have to take a little bit of a grain of salt and say, I'm gonna decide that half of this one's right and half of that one's right, and then read what they have to say.
Yeah, I'm just saying it would have been nice to have seen what was actually said or handed to these people.
Well, he said they read the petition.
I'm talking about the petition here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Anything else?
I think that's it. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much. It was a pleasure coming here.
Thank you.
So I'm, uh, Steve DoMeyer, uh, forty-two fifteen Hunter's Lane. I know I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to speak to the petition thing. So I did get seven petitions for our neighborhood in Hunter's Lane or Hunter's Crest subdivision. I came up and asked you for one, and I, I thought I pretty much said that, uh, you know, no pressure here. You, uh, you can, you can sign if you want to, but I do want to note that, um, they were all signed after they received this letter from Mr. Schiford, so I think they had all the facts on his side of the story when they signed them. So I'll just, I, I just want you to hear that.
Thank you. Good comments. Thank you. Good comments.
Okay, we've heard a lot tonight about enjoyment of property. And I am here to say, I wish to enjoy my property.
Can you tell us your name?
Elizabeth Brant, B-R-A-N-D-T.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I've lived in my home for fifteen years and I have a passion also. My passion is to live in the country. I was born in the country, lived in the city, love the country. And I spend a lot of time outside. The noise will impact that. I too love my neighborhood. I love my animals. They are my children. And I love the wildlife that I get to see. I have beaver because the creek does not run through his property, it runs through mine. I have herons, geese, turkey, skunks, even they are welcome. Eagles, hawks, deer, egrets. And yes, when my horses see an egret, they fly to the barn. And it's a, what, six-pound bird? But that's what animals do, at least the animals I've had for twenty-five years. Now, there could be other animals out there, but mine live a different life. I love my peace and quiet. I love the night sky. I like the constellations, the planets, the moon. And I get to see them. Every night, I walk down to my barn to put everybody to bed. But walking back to my house, I get to see that whole extension on your home. And I have not met you before tonight, so I was anxious to see you. That is very huge and the lights are on. And thank goodness in the summer, we have lots of trees between you and me. But in the winter, it's a neon sign. What happens to my passion for animals, peace and quiet, night sky, country living, that I love? Noise is not self-contained. It will spread through the air. Your south approach flies just a little bit to the side of my barn. Where do I put my animals every night? In my barn. Why? Because I don't want them to be spooked and in the middle of the night end up somewhere else. Do I have fences that hold them in? Yes. But sometimes that's not enough. I attended many, many meetings when they were gonna put in the High Line wires, right down County Road Two, which is what I live on. Oh no, they assured us over and over and over, it was not gonna impact our house values. Well, I listed my property for sale last July and until December. I had to list it for less because of the power lines. Although the power lines are not on my property, they're right across the street. People would drive up, see the power lines, and a cancellation would show up immediately. Why? Oh, saw the power lines. Because the power line pictures weren't in the ad on the internet. Why would you advertise that? So it does impact real estate property values. Plus, your assessor came out, which I'm fine with that, and also reduced the value of my home thousands of dollars because of power lines. So do you think a heliport is gonna make it any better? And as you said, our homes, I still value my home. I'm glad it didn't sell with Corona coming around. But I have to tell you, I don't wanna give thousands away and it went down by thousands. People, they tell you it won't. It did. It did. Okay, you say fifty or sixty trips. To me, that's a hundred up and downs. A hundred and twenty to a hundred up and downs, because you plan on going up, you plan on coming down. So you have to leave and come home. That's a hundred to a hundred and twenty approaches and takeoffs. Okay, yes, we have small craft in our neighborhood. I knew that when I moved in. Somebody told me there was an airport over there. Yep, okay. Those guys are very high in the sky because they're not landing. They're not landing. They're up there flying around. This year more than ever, they must all be working from home. But they're flying high. Do I hear them? Yes. But they're not close down. They're not low-flying aircraft people. They're high up there. Every once in a while, they shut their engines off because they have to practice turning them back on. That's a little scary. Okay, I have a passion for being in the country. I love being in the country. I love not having to pull blinds. I love that I get to do what I wanna do on my property. So I understand you wanting to do what you wanna do on your property, but so do I. And I'm asking you, board, commissioners, whatever, to please protect our peace and quiet and our ability to live in the country and our way of life. Planes are high and the helicopters are gonna be low. I can live with one, but it's really hard to live with the other. And I would like to continue to enjoy my property, just as you would like to continue yours. But my passion for peace and quiet does not have a negative impact on our neighborhood. It doesn't. And you probably don't even know I come and go. And I'd like to keep it that way for all of us.
Thank you.
My name is Glenn Newberger. I'm a resident of Cedar Lake Township. I oppose the applicant's request for a heliport at his home in the residential Wildwood Development. Like a majority of residents, I oppose private heliports in zone residential districts. Use of a private heliport in residential areas is simply unnecessary. The recreational use of a private helicopter in residential neighborhoods, I think, is grossly inappropriate. Can you imagine waking up at five AM? Yes, five AM in the morning from a neighbor, a neighbor's helicopter taking off? That's what's actually being proposed. That's what's in the condition use permit. Noise and safety are the obvious key issues. These concerns are what caused the applicant's similar request in East goal Lake, near Brainerd, Minnesota, to be denied by both the Planning Commission and the City Council. Given the impacts that continuous operation of a heliport will have on neighborhoods, including safety and ongoing enjoyment of individuals' homes and properties, I ask that the Planning Commission deny the applicant's request. Given the direct impact on the Wildwood Development and surrounding area, I ask the applicant to withdraw his request. Should the Planning Commission feel the need to review the condition use permit, I ask that you consider the following. Since precedent will be set broadly across the county with this first private heliport on a residential lot, the Planning Commission should take the opportunity to experience the operation helicopter from this site. Please schedule a time for the commissioners to observe two takeoffs and landings using two of the proposed approaches. Since no one on the commission or planning staff is a sound expert, hire a certified sound engineer to measure the actual noise levels. Perform a risk assessment to determine the various impacts to residents and neighborhoods. Survey the residents broadly across all impacted townships to determine support. I believe that you'll find that most people are disturbed at the fact that their neighbor could have a heliport. You'll also find that a vast majority of residents believe that it shouldn't be allowed. Take time to develop sound guidelines and requirements. This is a critical juncture for our township, Cedar Lake Township, and the county as helicopter operations will affect the safety and quality of life for many residents. In addition, should a condition use permit be considered, it should be modified to include the following provisions. Operation of the helicopter is allowed for the applicant only. No other person may operate the helicopter. The applicant shall maintain the helicopter following all manufacturer's requirements. An annual certification of maintenance from a licensed facility shall be provided to the county. The permit should state the allowed use of a single Bell two thousand, or two-hundred-and-six L-four helicopter. Use of an alternate helicopter requires reapplication. Use is limited to transporting family members. The permit should prohibit the transportation of current or prospective business associates. The allowed times for operating helicopters should limit it to reasonable neighborhood-friendly hours from nine AM to seven PM. Five AM takeoffs are disturbing to schoolchildren, to working parents. Runtime of the helicopter should be limited to five minutes per takeoff and landing. Idling is unnecessary and repair work should be performed at a licensed maintenance facility for the safety of local residents. Limit takeoff and landings to no more than five per week. And limit the annual takeoffs and landings to fifty per year as noted by the applicant to his neighbors. Add a three-hundred-foot setback requirement from all property lines and a five-hundred-foot distance for many neighborhooding, neighboring residences to commit to safe operation from adjacent homes, farms, and roads. In addition, I believe the staff is requiring the joining of the RR-one C and RR-one properties. The permit, though, should be clear that the properties need to be joined for continued use and that a heliport cannot be operated in an RR-one property without an occupied, single-family residence. Following feedback that I receive from local residents, and I think many of you know that I'm connected to a lot of residents in Cedar Lake Township, I greatly request that the applicant's request for operation of heliport be denied. The safety of residents far outweigh the recreational enjoyment of one person. Regardless of the path chosen for this applicant, I also ask the Planning Commission to direct staff to be in the process of removing heliports as an allowed use in residential agricultural districts. Helicopters belong at airports, not in our neighbor's backyard.
Thank you for your comments.
Given the time, I'm gonna keep it short.
Can you start with your name?
Sean Peterson.
Thank you, Sean.
I am a Wildwood resident. I live in close proximity to the Schiefers. I fully support his request. I have no issues. He has provided mounds of data and I have no, no issues. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Because it's all been said.
Hi, my name is Bruce Vasile. I'm, actually, I don't know if you can tell, I'm the property that's... Okay, this is my property right here, so I'm closest to the proximity of a helipad. So I have no issues with his request for, for conditional use. Also, there's been a lot of people talking about property values. And a, a little history on this property was actually, if you look at the property to the, to the west of Doug's house, all that was ghost plotted for ten homes. So I, I think i- if you talked about somebody purchasing my property, yes, the helicopter pad could have potential to, to reduce the property value, but it's more than offset by the fact that now that property is all one property and not ten homes. So I, I for sure am seeing net gain in my property value based on the information that, that, that was originally Armbruster had that zoned RR-one C and it was actually ghost plotted for ten homes. So much better off than it was. Did anybody have any questions for me as being in the close proximity to the helipad?
I don't think so. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Gross. I've been a licensed pilot for twenty-five years, fixed wing. I hold a instrument rating for flying and weather. I have a airframe and power plant mechanics license. I work for Delta Airlines Design Repairs as a structural engineer, so I know a little bit about safety and regulatory compliance. And I guess I'm here to vouch for the safety of Doug's piloting abilities. I've flown with him once, saw no issues. Very diligent with his checklist during the flight, after, pre-flight. Pre-flight, during the flight, after the, after the flight, everything was checked over again. I mean, I can definitely vouch for how safe that flight was operated. Completely at ease, have, from a safety point of view, just no issues at all. So just wanted to say I'm supportive of the additional use permit. With forty acres of land, I can't see how this couldn't happen, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Gross, do you live in the area?
Sorry, I live in Elko, Newmarket, Scott County.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Sean Murphy. I am a friend of Doug's and many people in the neighborhood. I live right next to Jim Britton. My property sits right here and the eagle's nest is right here. And I can tell you the majority of the time when I observe the eagle, it's flying in this area over this slough and does most of its hunting over there. So in my opinion, it wouldn't affect any of the flight paths that have been shown tonight. Couple of things I've heard a lot of people talk about, the loudness and in the country. Yes, we are on ten acres. Are we out in the country in the middle of nowhere? Absolutely not. One hundred percent false. There are aircraft everywhere flying over our neighborhood constantly. The helicopter has been brought up that flies into the city at least five hundred feet multiple times. Have I got out of my house, gone to my deck and watched it fly over? So those are facts. I have a pool and you can actually see it right there. Had multiple times have I had people over and either one of my neighbors here or Jim right here are mowing their lawn for multiple hours, because we got big lawns, two, three acres. Am I gonna go over to them and say, guys, you're gonna have to turn your lawnmower off while I'm enjoying my peace and quiet outside? I can't do that. You brought that up. We are not in the country. We are right on Highway Two. There are cars and trucks and making all kinds of noise all times of the day. I live at the end of the court and I can hear them. So if anybody's living in your hunters, right on those two, the county or those two corners, the noise has to be ten times what it is at my property. So in essence, I am in a hundred percent in favor of this. And again, forty acres, no reason this shouldn't go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dominic Monier. I actually live in Illinois, near St. Louis. I've been a professional helicopter pilot for fourteen years. And needless to say, helicopters are a huge part of my life. I lived here in Minneapolis from twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen. I flew for Carol eleven predominantly for the entire year in the springs. I did work with Scott County. I flew the mosquito control contract. I also worked for the DNR up north during fire season, so I know the area well. I've flown in many of the swamps here in Shakopee as well, around the neighborhoods where y'all live here, where Doug lives. So I'm real familiar with the area. Twenty sixteen, I moved to St. Louis and I've been flying Medevac ever since for the last four years. So again, flying helicopters is a big part of my life. In the beginning of twenty nineteen, Doug contacted me and said, hey, I just bought a Long Ranger. I need somebody to teach me how to fly it. And he told me about the insurance regulations and the experience requirements that were necessary. And being that I fly the exact model for work... And being that I fly the exact model for work, I was able to agree and come down. Because it'd be up north on my weeks off. I work seven on, seven off. I work seven-twelves and I take a week off, so in my off weeks, I'd come up here and I taught him how to fly the helicopter. We finished up in January and ever since, he's been on his own. He'll give me a call every once in a while just to say hello and he's done a great job. After hearing about what's going on here with the permit and the zoning and all the issues, it was important for me to come up and talk today. So, I'm here because I want everybody to know my opinion of Doug and I hold him in high regard. I'm in strong support for what he's trying to accomplish here. And during our training time over the last six months, we covered everything. Aerodynamics limitations, regulations, weather, systems, you name it, cover to cover, book to book, we went over it all. Ninety-eight percent on your written? Well above the minimum, the minimum to pass in the written. I talked with the examiner after it was all said and done and say, hey, how did he do? Did great. Everything went well. I know a lot of people say, well, he doesn't have a whole lot of hours yet. He's building hours towards his commercial license and I don't know, you probably already have the requirements to go get your commercial license tomorrow with how many hours you have and from working with him, from seeing the way he does things. I mean, he's done aviation right. He's taken taken the helicopter and the risks associated with the helicopter and he's got the utmost respect. So, I'm here in support of Doug and what he's trying to accomplish. In regards to his property, I've flown in and out of it multiple times. And as large as the property is, the power that helicopter has for takeoff, it could easily be above five hundred feet before it left his property line. And that's the altitude that you're having the helicopter that comes out of Farbo going up to HCMC or wherever they're going to pick up or drop off a patient. With that being said, in regards to my mosquito spraying days, we were low level. We were going back and forth and back and forth. Fast, aggressive flying. Horses were a concern. And there would be areas not to fly over, or if you were gonna fly over that area, we would make a phone call and make sure the horses were put away. In regards to him departing and landing at his house, I truly believe there would be ample altitude where the horses probably wouldn't even notice there was something five hundred feet above them in the sky. In closing, I see no reason why this shouldn't be granted. He's put a tremendous amount of time, energy, effort. I don't think people understand how much time this has taken. For me, one of the things I'm most proud of in my life was the day I got my private license and and I've seen how hard he's worked and how much this means to him and that's why I drove up here today. Just to let everyone know how I feel. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a question. We have a question for you.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Do you live in Illinois or do you live in Missouri?
Well, I wish I lived in Missouri, but I live on the Illinois side, just across the river from St. Louis. It's about an eight-minute flight to the tier-one hospitals.
You mentioned that you hope he gets his commercial license. What's, what would that, would that mean he can get a bigger?
No. What he's allowed to fly right now with his private, he can do with his, he would be able to do with the commercial. There'd be no difference. I, I feel like people might view him as a rookie pilot because he's only a private pilot. But as time has gone on and he's building hours and experience and, and having more experiences with flying, that he's to the point now where he could change career path and go get a commercial helicopter license. And I just wanted to point that out.
Well, I'm just concerned that if he had a commercial license, maybe he'd wanna upgrade or do something different with the property.
I don't, I don't foresee that.
Okay.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kelly Schiefer, Doug's wife. There's been a lot of stuff in what I was gonna say that's already been talked about tonight, so might be a little choppy. I'm gonna just try and pick and choose some stuff that I think's important. I know Doug pretty well. We were high school sweethearts. We've been together for twenty-seven years, so I know him and know that, like any loving father and husband, he would not put his family in danger, period. He has put the safest stuff in that helicopter that he possibly can. My career choice was healthcare. I was a nurse and a nurse anesthetist, both at HCMC and Regions Hospital. I've seen the worst of the worst, from accidents to near drownings to burn victims, gunshots, stab wounds, you, you name it, I've seen it. I've taken care of it. Working in trauma changed me emotionally and mentally. It made me question the safety of absolutely everything I did and continue to do today and with my family. So, totally made me a safety freak. So what did the safety freak do when her husband came and said, I wanna be a pilot, a helicopter pilot? Well, I read about it. The safety statistics on the Bell helicopter are there in writing and Rex has talked about it tonight. Sorry, I'm just gonna kinda skip some stuff here. I, I applaud him for doing the extensive research and buying the most safest aircraft on the market and for spending the extra funds to make it safe for his family and everybody he flies over. People have mentioned the noise. I've actually been in my house and promised to God, he left and I honestly did not even hear him. I went up to talk to him and he was gone. So I, that's just my experience. I can't speak for everyone else. Just this Friday, I was outside between eight fifteen and eight forty-five and three, yes, low-flying helicopters or planes flew over our, right over our house. So I'm confused why the level of that frequency is okay and that noise, but a ninety-second landing is so disturbing. We have jake brakes on County Road Two daily occurrence, nonstop. There's motorcycles, snowmobiles. If you wanna hear birds chirping and complete organic nature sounds, which I, I appreciate also, you would have to move out of our neighborhood and you'd have to move out of our community. It just, sound is, noise is part of our lives. It's not gonna go away. I can honestly say that I can send Doug and my children offline without hesitation or without batting an eye. I think it's safe to say that I, out of anyone in this room, has the most to lose with him flying. And I would send my girls with him any day and I would get in with him any day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly.
Greetings. My name is David Turnberg. I am a resident of Wildwood Ponds. In fact, I am the longest-tenured resident. I pretty much saw Wildwood Ponds come to fruition over the many years. I'm here today to speak. I'm strongly approved of, of this, this helipad. If you take a look at, like we've talked about, the amount of property, there is just tons of property. And I've been around when helicopters come in and left and, mind you, this was pre the, being notified that we were, that Doug was unable to have his helicopter there. So this is when, when we was talking about coming in and out of his helicopter pad, it was before the county ever brought it to Doug's attention that he could not have it there. People talk a lot about noise. We have a lot of noise in our neighborhood. I'll reiterate what Kelly just said. About six o'clock every single morning, there's a big old semi or dump truck or something that comes flying down County Road Two and right in front of our development lays on his jake brake every single day. If you can tell me that you can't hear that and be honest about it, I'd be very surprised. Low-flying aircraft all day, every day. And when we're saying low, I mean really low. I was just in the back development yesterday with my boys, putting a trailer back that I had borrowed and there was a float plane flying right over our heads. Checking out our neighborhood. There was also an eagle flying around in the sky and he kinda flew in his different direction. We have noise like you wouldn't believe. We have people with classic cars that have very loud mufflers on them that go thump, thump, thump when they fire them up and drive them out of the neighborhood. But you know what? They fire them up and they leave. Just like a helicopter. You fire it up and you leave. So when people say that they don't wanna sit outside at a barbecue and listen to a helicopter all day, that's ludicrous because the helicopter is meant for transportation. So is an airport or an airplane or a car. You get in it, you take off, you go to your destination and then eventually you come back home. I have a lot of barbecues at my house. We have a lot of parties. We have friends over. My children have friends over all the time. No one's distracted from this. There's other noises that go on in the neighborhood. Like Sean said, we all mow three to five acres. Three hours of mowing. It takes me to mow three hours. How much noise is that? And then we get a weed whip out and then we have our backpack blower, so there's tons of noise. That noise is there for a long time. Helicopter picks up and takes off. No big deal. A lot of people have made mention about horses, so I wanna read a couple of letters about horses if you don't mind. First of all, my wife, she shows horses. She has a horse. She belongs to a barn not too far away from us down in Prior Lake, Dark Horse Farm. I asked them about it and they gave me some comments and here are some of their comments. Now they go and do horse shows. Helicopters land at horse shows for evacuating injured riders. Now think about that. You're at a horse show. You have very expensive horses there. People are trying to show off their horses. There's judges. Someone gets hurt, a helicopter lands, picks them up and goes. If a helicopter was so dangerous to these horses, why would they be landing there to try to save these individuals' lives? Everyone said mosquito patrol flies low over horse properties too. Horses, you know, you don't hear about that in the news that horses freak out. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but you don't hear about it. Hot air balloons fly low over horse properties. In fact, there was a hot air balloon that used to land in my property when my boys were young. They'd run out and see it all the time. Where's the regulations for them? Horses are generally adapted to the equipment and the engines. Lot of horse properties have big tractors, big diesel tractors, noisy bobcats that are there more than ninety seconds. That comes from professionals at an equestrian barn. Let's talk about Hunter's Lane. So on Hunter's Lane, in that development where everyone was canvassed, one comment was made that they signed it after Doug had put together his informational packet. Okay. But there was a point a year ago when Doug was trying to, was gonna look at getting a CUP for his current helipad that he put up inadvertently, without knowing the restrictions. And that neighbors, that neighborhood was canvassed and a message was delivered to them last year. So, if there was a message or they signed after Doug sent out his packet of information this year, they were already soiled. They had that information that the opposition was giving out, a one-way message they were given last year. Now, when you take a look at, when you take a look at petitions, opposition turned in a whole bunch of petitions. If you actually went through there, how many do you think are actually within the quarter-mile radius that the company has in their, their regulations? Talking about all the horses up on Eskimo, that's over a mile away. In fact, they turned in a whole bunch of petitions from people on Prior Lake. You know there's a seaplane base on Prior Lake? So how could you be offended of a helicopter way out in Prior Lake, eighteen miles away from where we live, when there's a seaplane base there? So the point I wanted to make about petitions, once I saw what was turned into the county from the opposition, I started looking at some of the addresses. So I decided, hey, well, I can get a bunch too. So I went online to a program called change.org and put together a petition. I helped Doug with this. That's what I do. I'm his friend. Known him for fifteen years. I'm helping him out. He asked for my assistance, therefore I did. And I put this petition together and a group of us emailed it out and texted out the link. It's a public website and you can read the story and you can electronically sign for it. We had two hundred and one signatures in less than twelve hours. Now, what had happened is when I turned in my report to Marty, I turned in all the signatures. About half of them were for people outside of our state. So I contacted the company change.org and asked them, how's this happen? And their response was, well, this is a public website. Just because you didn't broadcast it doesn't mean that people can't just go to the website, find the petition and go, hey, that looks pretty cool. I'm gonna sign it. So of that, we have ninety-seven of them that are legit Scott County. Plus the ones that people reached out to us and turned in also. So to me, a petition is kinda like a presidential debate. If you don't hear both sides of the story, how can you know if you wanna say yes or no? The petition that it put out was a one-sided story. People weren't informed of what you were informed of tonight. So how would they know that helicopters, you don't crash, right? You don't have accidents at a private heliport once every four hundred and ninety-five years, if this, if that. You don't know that. So the people that sign these petitions, they heard a one-way street, one-way story. That's all it was. Had the opposition gone in and said, hey, here's their information, here's our information, you make the choice. Wouldn't that have made sense? I wanna read two letters. One of them is from Donald and Constance Lovelace. The people that apparently changed their mind because they're selling their property. They wish they could be here. They're a little scared of COVID. Okay? I've spent some time with these folks, very sweet folks. You know what? They thanked me four million times too. We talk about our cats. We talk about their horses. Because my wife has horses. Great. We talk to other people too. I'm gonna read this. To whom it may concern, we are Don and Connie Lovelace and we are writing to now show our support for Doug Schiefer's plans to land his helicopter near our home located at two six six two seven Panama Avenue, Webster, Minnesota. We were approached in the fall of two thousand nineteen by Lauren Balls and Jim Britton. Now, mind you, you're all aware that Doug was gonna try to get a CUP on his, his current property until we were told by Marty that it was gonna be a little bit more difficult. So we withdrew and did a lot more research and came up with a new solution so we could please everyone. Okay? We were approached in the fall of two thousand nineteen by Lauren Balls and Jim Britton, both of Wildwood Pond's neighborhood and neighbor to Doug, about a plan for a helipad and helicopter landing in their development near our house. We received a call from Lauren Balls with a home visit by Jim Britton presenting us with petition letters, with a petition letter against having this helicopter in our area. We were told that this would be a definite threat to public safety, create environmental harm, that there would be hazardous materials and were way more dangerous than what a normal person would have to, or store on their own property. And that there would be a significant loss of value on our property if this was to happen. We were told this one-sided story. That, that was believable at the time as we had not much knowledge of helicopters and we signed the petition against this as most everyone else in the area, quote, "Most everyone else in the area was signing it," unquote. That's what they were told. Recently, we were able to have a conversation with Doug about this issue. Doug spoke to us about all the facts about helicopters, their impact on the environment, the safety precautions that he takes every time he flies. Doug spoke to us with respect Doug spoke to us with respect, provided us factual information with studies to back it, which we all heard tonight from Rex, and truthfully answered our questions that we had to help us gain a better understanding of his plan. We love that people have a chance to follow their dreams and passions, and now feel, since we have heard both sides of the story, both sides of the story, that this is something that we fully support. Now, Doug had his conversation with Lovelace before they even discussed him buying that piece of property. Okay? Last one. This is another horse person. This person here, um, runs a, a place called Open Door Ranch. And this is right off of Hadley Avenue, two five four hundred Hadley Avenue. Now, you could probably go back and look through the records. Hadley Avenue has had, uh, several different accidents over the years, as has Zachary, right off of County Road Two. A helicopter landed right there, uh, because a car fell off of a jack and crushed a gentleman. That would be the second house off of two and Zachary, right across the street is a horse farm. The medevac helicopter, which is a lot louder than Doug's helicopter, landed right in the road. Picked up this gentleman, brought him to the hospital. The letter I'm gonna read to you is from a lady who was kicked by, uh, a horse and kicked her right in the chest. Thought she was gonna die, crawled out of her barn, someone saw her, called the cops. That helicopter landed right on her property. To whom it may concern, my name is Shannon Van Skye, and I own Open Door Ranch, a small private hobby farm located at two five four hundred Hadley Avenue, Alcoa New Market. We have lived here for sixteen years and own and board horses and other animals. Dogs, there's some goats down there. Over the years, we have, um, seen several unfortunate reasons for medical hel- helicopters to land in pastures next to some of our homes. And the reason she says it like that is because her neighbor that lives across the street, her neighbor's husband was also injured, and they're a horse family, and another medical helicopter landed there. So I don't know what it is about this street, but medical helicopters like to visit it. Four years ago, I had myself a terrible horse-related accident, and a medical helicopter was sent. They landed right down in our pasture, one hundred feet from our driveway, house, and other pasture where horses were. It not only did, uh, it not only did not disturb the animals on my property at that time, but afterwards, you could not even tell where the helicopter had even landed. Helicopter, quote, "noise" is something we all hear in the background as I believe we were on a flight pattern for medical helicopters coming from New Prague Hospital, which is true. I don't feel noise or action of landing is disturbing to animals or residents. I was also involved in helping her neighbor get a conditional use permit to build her arena. That's neither here nor there. We have, we have noises. We have all sorts of noises out there. Kids riding dirt bikes, uh, we have snowmobiles. Jim used to snowmobile like crazy when he was a little bit younger. Okay, we all did it. Uh, we have traffic like you wouldn't believe. So when they say that we're living in a pristine area, have you ever been on County Road Two? Go to two and twenty-three. There are more burnout patches at two and twenty-three. I can't imagine that people aren't hearing that and horses aren't freaking out from people revving up their cars and burning out. We have, uh, right down the road is Doherty's Bar. Well, guess what? Every Wednesday night, what is it? It's biker night. What comes rumbling through town? Harleys. What do they sound like? Okay? Sound, I, it, it can't be an issue. Safety. It's all been said. That's all I got. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Todd Hutchinson, and I live at, uh, two six three five five Wilder Drive. So as a girl, I'm, I'm two houses away from Doug. So, um, Doug, you're a great guy. I, I don't know you well, but I know you a little bit. Uh, there's a lot of people here, uh, that vouch for you. I, I don't think that's, you know, what's that issue here tonight. Um, it's, you know, I've lived in this, in this development for, um, eighteen years. And, um, the development has changed a lot over the years and, and, uh, very much recently. It's a shame to see, um, what's going on, you know, with, with sites, um, you know, developing and, and neighbors getting upset with each other, you know? And that's not directed at any one person, okay? It's, it's a lot of people in the neighborhood, and it's just a shame to see. So, um, you know, I'm against, uh, the helicopter, uh, landing pad, the heliport in the neighborhood. And I respect everybody's opinion, um, who's for it, as well as those, uh, that are against it. I don't, any, any issues that I've had, uh, have been brought up. They've been talked about. A, a lot of people on both sides feel very strongly about it, okay? Uh, so I won't talk about any of those. There's one issue, though, uh, that, that I don't think I have the answer to, and I don't think you have the answer to. I don't think Doug has the answer to it. It's what happens to my property value if this goes in. Okay? Noise is a big thing. Okay? And it's partially about perception, too. Doug's, um, a pitcher with a different, um, lawnmowers and the different, um, things that make noise. That was a thousand feet up in the air where his helicopter was. My house, you know, I, I don't know how high you're gonna be at my house. Is it a thousand feet, or is it three hundred feet? You know, according to that seven or eight percent, where are you at? You know, I, I don't think it's a thousand feet. But anyways, you know, that, that needs to be considered there as far as noise goes. But it's also perception. So if in a year I want to sell my home and I can't, or I have to get a lower price, you know, is that fair? I'm, I'm all for, you know, you can do what you want on your property. If, if you have the means to do so, then, then do it. It's great, unless it's negatively affecting other people. And if it's negatively affecting a lot of other people, that needs to be considered. Okay? So, um, I, I know that if I was looking, I, I've lived in the country my whole life. I grew up in Jordan, so not very far away. When I went to school, I lived in the city. I moved back out. I lived in Lot, south of Long City, uh, for seven years, and then I've been where I'm at right now, uh, for eighteen. I like the country. And, and yes, there are other noises out there, too. But part of it's about perception. People move out to our area, um, and live in our area for peace and quiet. Okay? So if I'm selling my home and I have to tell somebody who's interested in my home that there's a helipad right up the road, they come in and out, they don't make a lot of noise. They just, you know, a little bit, you know, when they fly over, but it's not very often, and it's no big deal. Are they gonna purchase my home? A home, you know, uh, similar to it, that doesn't have that condition, would they purchase that home instead? You know, I, I can't tell you that for sure. I know what I would do. If I was considering both, I wouldn't buy the house with the helicopter pad close to it. I would buy the other house. Okay? That's, that's my perception. Um, and you may feel the same way. You may feel differently. That was that. On the, uh, on the petitions that went out, too, uh, if, if you guys are feeling that they're tainted, call these people. Talk to these people, see how they feel about it. Maybe they are, maybe they're not. Um, I know Jim approached me. He, he said there was a petition, uh, they're putting together, uh, against the helicopter pad. He didn't tell me about acreage. He didn't talk about, you know, uh, anything, other than he just told me that this was out. Do you want to sign it? You know, take your time, think about it. You know, whatever. If you have any questions, you know, on that, uh, ask me if you want to call. You should call the people and talk to them. You should know, you know, the facts on that before you discard them all, uh, or, you know, count them all. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
My name is Trent Schiefer. I'm Scott County resident as well, cousin to Doug, family to a lot of these people here. Um, just one quick note on the value of properties. I think it's crazy to hear all the noise about it decreasing the value of your property. I, I wish I lived in Wildwood Ponds, because I'd love to sell my house in a year from now, once this is approved. Some of the most expensive, expensive properties have helipads around them. It's my belief. I don't know that that's a false statement. How could it decrease the value of your home by having a helipad by it? I firmly believe that, and wanted to point that out. Questions?
Thanks, well, thanks, Trent.
Thanks.
Good evening. It's a late night. Thank you for serving our county. My name is Jennifer Heim. Um, I'll sign in. And, um, I actually live in Wildwood Ponds, um, kind of like across the street from Doug. We've only lived there three years. It is a wonderful neighborhood. There is noise. You hear the trucks out on two. You hear the motorcycles. You hear everybody's lawnmowers. When Doug last summer flew over our house, I didn't even, I was in the kitchen, didn't even hear it flying over. But then I had to let the dogs out the front, where I saw Doug landing. So I didn't even hear it from the house. So I totally support Doug and, um, have no problem with the helipad in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Laurie Fissiel. I live next to Doug. I'm his wife. So I live right next door to Doug. And since this has started, I mean, if it's gonna affect anything, as you saw in the three-D picture thing, you see our house. It's right there in front of you. He's been very honest and open with us, um, about the whole situation and the process. And, um, we moved out there, too, to enjoy the area. And this is not gonna take away from that. I raised my family out there. My kids are back at home with me. They, they love coming back out there. That's not gonna detoy them to not come back out and visit us and spend the day and spend the weekend. We can cook out and everything. That's not what this is gonna do. So I just wanted to let you know I'm in support of it.
Thank you very much.
Bob Hidalgo. I'm a neighbor of, uh, Kelly and Doug Schiefer. And my family and I are one hundred percent support this helicopter. And any other neighborhood have a helicopter that opposes this, I would be in support of them. And Doug has been over our house. I maintain irrigation systems in the neighborhood, and I've been outside when he's been taking off and landing. Surprisingly, it was not as loud as what I anticipated. And at one time, my wife did not even hear the helicopter when I did. And, which didn't catch my attention any more than airplanes circling the house as it does frequently through the day. So, uh, when I first met Doug fifteen years ago, he, uh, one thing I raised my eyebrow is about safety. You know, so we do have kids in the neighborhood, and they ride their snowmobiles. And Doug was adamant about marking all the culverts. So I just know that Doug, up on air, on the ground, he's, that's how he's wired. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ben Portillo, resident of Scott County, known Doug and the Schiefer family for fifteen years, and, um, somewhat becoming an expert as well on, uh, heli pads after tonight. And, uh, everyone certainly has had their opinion and, uh, and I think presented all the facts as well. I also live in the country, just a few miles down the road. And as everyone knows and understands, does have the noise. And I think that's one of the biggest complaints about the neighboring properties is the noise. But as well as addressed is all of the cars and the semis and the snowmobiles. Uh, I got planes. I live on Cedar Lake. I have planes, float planes that come in and out of there often. I have jet skis that go all the time. The biggest noise complaint is the guy, my neighbor that mows his yard. And that's, as everyone stated, a few hours. From what we hear, it's maybe a few minutes landing and taking off with the, with the helicopter there. And honestly, with the support that Doug has, from what I understand, the laws that are already in place that are giving him the opportunity to do this and do it right, as everyone's saying, I think, uh, taking this case in particular and having all of the assets, Doug's done a lot of homework, has all of the experts here. I think for our county, it's a great opportunity to establish, um, all of those good rules and, and get everyone on a, set the established, uh, guidelines there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anyone else who has not spoken yet who would like to make a comment on this? This is a public hearing. Is anyone who has not spoken yet, before we come around? Because I know at least two people appear to want to make another comment. They have spoken before. Anyone else who has not spoken yet? Can they hear me in the other room, there, Brad, as well? Okay, great. Okay. If you want to come up, and I know you, you wanted to respond to that, uh, so.
My name is Mike Bassett again. I just wanted to respond to the gentleman's comment. It's been going around dozens of times about my comment about it shouldn't matter, it wouldn't matter to me. We're talking hundreds of yards from his neighbors. I mean, the picture doesn't do it justice. I've been on the site, where it's going to be. The gentleman and his wife that just spoke are the closest neighbors, hundreds of yards away from all these other neighbors. And the noise on two is no joke. I live off of two. I live right behind the ball field in New Market. Thirty mile an hour zone. You'll be woken up all night long with the Jake brakes coming down the hill. So ninety seconds in and out, with the amount of property he has, there should be no reason. So, fully supportive.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And did you want to speak again as well?
Yes.
Okay. Come up to the podium.
Very quick. The, what I was speaking to wasn't that you thought it wasn't the problem, but you said you wanted a heliport next to you. And that's what I couldn't, uh, figure out. Why would you want one? But the real reason I came up, the, you have a lot of people talking about the noise out there. We got so much noise. We got so much noise. And their solution is to add more noise. I mean, I, I was just saying, what are we, what are we talking about? I mean, if you got a noise problem, the last thing I've heard is that you add more noise to solve the problem. I don't get it. The third thing, I was gonna say, I'm a neighbor of Don and Connie Lovelace. And the statement that, gee, you know, they, they were first approached by Lauren and Jim, and that's what influenced them, just isn't so. I remember very well Don coming down to me when Doug first started flying the helicopters. And he said, the reason I remember it so well, he said, Dave, you're an attorney of sorts. I've never been called an attorney of sorts before, so I remember the conversation real well. And I said, yes, I'm an attorney of sorts. Well, these helicopters, he's taking off. It's just awful, da, 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 da. I'm gonna have to sell my house. What can I do? And I said, well, if I were you... And I said, well, if I were you, I would call Scott County. And that's, and that was before Jim, Lauren, anybody else had talked to him. This fall, he came down to me when this started, before it was a, application put in or anything else. He said, hey, I was contacted by a Realtor. And I'm sure he's representing Mr. Schiefer. I'm not going to sell, Dave, are you going to? I said, I don't want to sell to anybody. I got land very close to this. I said, I'm not selling, Don. And good, great, we won't sell. Next thing I know, he enters a purchase agreement. So I want to put that into perspective with the letter that, that was read to the commission. And I think that's all I have, unless there's any questions.
Nope. I, I don't have any. Very good. Brad, is there any, uh, thing on the internet? I know that your, the staff has been monitoring that. Is there any?
There's no emails that have come in with comments.
Mr. Chair, this has been laying up here, I counted them, there's, uh, fifty letters of support.
Right.
Laying here, pretty much saying the same thing, you know.
Those, um, this was sent to, um, electronically to all of the commission members. Marty, I think you were in charge of that, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. So that was sent to the, all the commission members electronically, as well as all of the documents. I had Marty print all that up so that we have it for reference.
Okay. So what, what, what that is, is a summation of all the comments I've got in favor. I mean, we had some that came in with the application, we had some that came in sporadically, uh, right up till today. Also, um, for the comments and the petitions opposed to the request, some of those came in relatively quickly. Other ones came in sporadically, uh, right up till, I think, yesterday. Maybe, maybe this, today I got one, I don't recall. But, yeah, they've, they've been coming in, um, since the application came in.
At this point, uh, we don't have anyone coming up to the podium. I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Hartman.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. I will call for the vote on this. Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Von Hoff, yes. Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. This time I'll entertain, uh, discussion. Motion.
Go ahead, if you want.
Go ahead.
What, discussion or a motion?
Discussion.
Discussion. I believe so.
Oh, I got good news and bad news. I all of a sudden do not have any credibility in petitions because they've come from all over the country. We have jobs. Do we have to be, have our time taken? And somebody that lives in California or something in favor or opposed? So, like I said, I think petitions are, it, it just loses credibility when it can go online and people are just going to sign up. Um, at the, the cost of this is to divide a neighborhood. It happened to me one time when I lived at my house out in Spring Lake Township. And some of those feelings just last forever. So you, you've opened that door and, and you're going to have to live with it. Bad news is, I own trucks that have Jake brakes, so I've had to kind of grit my teeth about that when I'm being knocked. I, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear what you just said. I own trucks that have Jake brakes that's out there. They don't like that either. Um, there are a lot of things that we, I think we should still probably research. We don't know if it's going to affect property values or not. Um, one time we had an application, somebody wanted to put in a golf course. And oh, some of the neighbors just went crazy. They didn't want that in their backyard. And other people said, oh, I think my property is going to be worth a lot more if I have a golf course in my backyard. So I guess it's just in the eye of the beholder what will happen with property values. Um, I might have another comment later on, but I'll let Mr. Hartman speak.
Okay, Mr. Chair, um, I think this Ben fella, uh, said it perfect. This situation, we haven't had a, uh, helipad in the county before. And this would set the standard for future. I like everything I've heard. He's, he brought in experts from every facet of, uh, of this. And, um, he's done his homework and he's done it well. And, um, I'm comfortable with the two changes that were made, number twelve and fifteen, prior to the meeting. The only, uh, question I have is, um, is the three, any of the three supervisors from Cedar Lake Township going to do their job? And, uh, do this yearly inspection, or is the county staff going to do it? So I'm sure that could be worked out. So when it comes time to voting, I'll be in favor of this.
Commissioner Robbie, do you have any comments at this time?
Yes, I do, Chairman. Um, I applaud the people that came up and talked, uh, being pro or against. Uh, they certainly all have come up with valid reasons, pro or con. Um, it, as I say, I applaud them because of the interest that they have. Instead of just leaving this go by and, uh, not voicing their opinion, and then a year from now, saying that, hey, we have a problem with this. Anyway, my kudos to the people that have talked. Uh, I want to give Mr. Alexander, um, uh, a major thumbs up. I was impressed with his background. I was impressed with his, his, uh, talk. I, um, I, I guess I, um, I'm looking at what I heard tonight. Um, Mr. Schiefer, as, uh, Mr. Hartman indicated, has certainly done his homework. Uh, he brought the experts up and there was absolutely very, very good conversation and answered a number of my questions that I had. So, um, that's where I sit.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Watson?
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I have some concerns. Uh, this is going to be the first CUP heliport that we're going, we're going to approve for Scott County. And I really have a strong feeling that we need to do it right the first time. I don't know that we have a complete understanding of all the issues that we faced here. I, I really have a, I need to understand more about what, the difference between the FAA requirements and the Scott County ordinances regarding, uh, security of a helipad or lighting of a helipad, or, uh, when a heli, when a helicopter can take off and what kind of weather. I, I know the FAA probably has got that, but I need to know some more about that before I can really make a value decision here and move forward with the CUP.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Huber?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, based on what I heard today, I will be of support of this, uh, CUP. Some of the reasons why is distance at least eight hundred feet from the nearest home. Uh, total takeoffs are fifteen, maybe eighty per year, so it's limited. Noise is kept below the MPC requirements. Only flying in daylight hours. Maybe get some argument what that is in the summertime. Maybe it should be seven o'clock. I don't see that much difference. Uh, when I, at my place here in Scott County, there's float planes by me. And there's float planes at my cabin. So I see that all the time. So I don't see a big difference between them. And I don't believe animals at a flight height of five hundred feet is going to be a threat to the animal. So I would be in support of this.
Commissioner Henshaw?
Well, here's a shock to everybody, because I know you're all expecting me to say no. Um, I like to be a good juror and I like to listen to everything. And I am more befuddled now than I was when I started. I heard what the gentleman over here said and that he cautioned us about this is the first one, but it's going to be the precursor for others. And I think Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Watson nailed it. I don't have enough information right now to make a good decision and, and make one that is going to set the precedent for going forward. I think we need to table this and go back to the drawing board and figure out all of the issues so that we make an informed decision, a decision. I couldn't vote for the conditional use permit right now because I do not like the conditions that are on it. But I would vote, I would vote to table it, uh, due to some more study and understanding that what we are doing is, may very well be setting a precedent for having a heli, a helipad.
I concur. Uh, I will say that everybody in this room who has brought information to us today has helped this.
Yes.
And, and this is going to be a much better decision ultimately because of this. I will say that, like everyone, every other commissioner, we've been to the site multiple times. We've read hundreds, I think hundreds of pages of information. Research I did on the internet said that, uh, I ran the internet up today, said Bell two oh six helicopter safety. And I went to the Aviation Safety Network. It said there's been sixteen crashes in the U.S. in the last twelve months with Bell two oh sixes. And I just use the U.S. because it's a worldwide, uh, network. I don't know what the accurate information is. It's true that, uh, flying is extremely, extremely safe, but in helicopter crashes, um, privately run helicopters only account for three percent of the flight hours, but twenty-five percent of the crashes. Another figure, you know, and people say different things and it depends on how you look at that. Now, having said that, the applicant has done an outstanding job of, you know, doing everything right and trying to set this up. So I'm sitting here thinking about this information and, um, and, and, and looking at it. I would like to see, um, what the Elko New Market Fire Rescue Plan is. There's nothing in the application at all on this. They would never contact it, as far as I can tell. Um, they're the responsible parties if anything does happen, or if there's a fire in, in, for what Elko would, uh, rescue needed. The topographical map, if you're familiar, and everyone in this room is familiar with that area, there's a ridge to the south, there's a big ridge to the north. There's power lines that run up and down two and then up and down Panama. Those are all challenges. And then you add the topography and, and, and the, um, as far as I could tell, the modeling done was done on a flat plane. And that's not the topography out there. So, I mean, I don't know. I'd like to see more information on that. That's something I would like to see. You need to see accurate information. And this is how it comes about. We get the information accurately and then we can make these decisions better. So I, I just think that those are the things that came up to me, uh, right away on this. And there's been a lot thrown around about sound, about what is the actual sound. I spent thirty-four years as a police officer. I landed many helicopters on roadways. I had to set up landing zones. I've flown on the Bell two oh six a number of times with air ambulance. I brought them in between, you know, uh, and if you look at any roadway, what runs down the right away is power lines on each side. We had to set up landing zones at night and would bring them in. So I know that can be done. I mean, helicopters have remarkable capabilities, but things have to be done right. So anyways, I have some concerns about the information we have right now. I agree, this is the first time that we're looking at this. We need to get it right. It impacts everybody in this room. And I live on Panama and I have horses too. And my wife has, also has a horse at, uh, Dark Horse too. And I have my own horses on my property, you know. But that's, you know, like I say, horses spook at a lot of things, so, you know, we've.
I just don't want to make a mistake.
Yes. So, so we all have something in this that we want to get it right. Because ideally, you know, and Commissioner Johnson kind of made that comment, this can split up a neighborhood. And, and, you know, you guys come in here and say, we know each other. We've all lived in the same neighborhood, you know. Hopefully, we can come to some type of decision that's going to help everybody go, this worked out. So that's what I would like to see here. So what, my recommendation, I'd go with the, I defer to Commissioner Henshaw's with making a recommendation to table back for those specific reasons. And any others that, you know, I think the conditions still need to be worked out. I think they're a little bit too broad. They need to be more specific. Um, anything else that should be on there?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, um, I, uh, my only request is try and articulate what you want us to look into. So I really appreciate your comments, Mr. Chairman, about this. These are the specific items that I, I would like staff to do further research on. Applicant and its consultants do additional research on.
Yep. Uh, I know you, go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Hours of operation. I guess I kind of agree that you had your windows open and maybe at five o'clock you maybe wouldn't want to hear it go. So maybe we could narrow it down to other CUPs where we have hours of operation. This would be similar to that with an hour. And forget about the daylight and all that. Weather isn't a condition. I can't believe he would, Mr. Schiefer, take a chance to land in bad conditions. I don't think that's our concern. I think that's his concern. And, uh, I think he's going to be an outstanding pilot. Sound, I guess maybe we should get another opinion, just to be.
Or a study or something?
Yes.
I don't know.
And then I really liked your Elko New Market Fire Plan because that was one thing I had written down on that page seven for Mr. Alexander was fire. Does Scott County have a plan or does somebody have a plan? Well, those are some of my issues.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have some, but I'll just give them to Marty.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Watson, did you have something else that you wanted specifically before we look for a motion?
With regard to, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just stated my facts with regard to the connectivity between FAA and the Scott County ordinances. And the issue, uh, associated with, um, uh, MPC standards. I just think we need to clear it up. And I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Johnson, um, on the other issues. And I certainly support Commissioner Henshaw's as well.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Robbie, did you have any other issues that you wanted specifically staff to look at?
Uh, well, yes, Commissioner. I guess the only thing I, uh, I want to make sure that we're not redundant in what new information that Marty is seeking. You know, there was a lot of information that was given to us. Um, unless I'm missing something here, we, you know, the FAA, uh, addressed certain situations. The noise situation I felt was addressed. Hours of operations were addressed. Uh, unless I missed in, uh, something in the readings here. But as I say, I don't want this to be a redundant issue.
Right.
If we come back in a month and see and hear and read the same things. That's, uh, I'll rest my case there.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with that, but I also would like to see some teeth in the conditions so that if we set these conditions, there is, uh, something happens if the conditions are violated.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion then, as there's further discussion on this.
I will make a motion to table this for a month, uh, in, in time, so that we can do some further research. And recognizing that if this would be passed, we would be setting a precedent for heliports in Scott County.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henshaw. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. I will, uh, call for the rule on this. Uh, Commissioner Henshaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
I'll, um, go along with it in good faith. Uh, that will be moving in positive direction.
Say yes or no then.
Yes.
Commissioner Huber?
Nay.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Robbie?
Nay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Von Hoff, aye. Commissioner Watson?
Aye.
Motion passes. This item has been tabled. Before we adjourn here, I would like to thank everyone who came here tonight. And I will say from, uh, your planning commission on behalf of, there's a lot of experience sitting at this board here. And we very, very much appreciate when you come forward and tell us about your neighborhood and tell us what the impacts are because it helps us make better decisions. So thank you very much. Have a good night. Drive, night drive safely.